Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is nine AM Wednesday, August 23rd. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. So at this time is citizen input, and this is that classic situation that puts us in a spot where we do have an agenda item, talking about our partnership with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. We have three people asking to speak on mule deer. So at this time is the chair's prerogative. I'm not going to allow this topic, knowing that this is not a public hearing on the matter. I know we've heard a lot of input and it's a very engaging topic. So with that, I do apologize. That's a little bit of procedure.
I'd like to make a counter argument. We have been told for several weeks that the topic that's going to be on our agenda is the state mule deer plan, which is a very different topic than, for example, the county mule deer winter range wildlife overlay update, which we abandoned several weeks ago. So if there is anyone who would like to speak on that topic, I think they should be allowed to speak on that topic because it is not what is on the agenda.
Okay, so as I say, it's not a public hearing on the matter. Commissioner Dare, any thoughts?
When we have the presentation, is there any comments? There won't be none with that. Okay, all right. So, and I didn't see who, what did they say?
I just wanted to speak on the, you know, it just says mule deer.
Mule deer. So does it say overlay mule deer, or does it just say?
County land use and mule deer in one of them.
Okay, well then, maybe that one could speak if it's.
Okay, well, so there's support for this. As I say, I just, just so you know, I mean, this is the dynamics of this situation where we're not having a public hearing on the matter. So with this input, let's allow this testimony. Please join us. This is three minute public testimony. Citizen input on the topics that you'd like to speak. So we are going to proceed with this. So Carl Shoemaker will be first, Carl Fundling is second, and then Michael O'Leary.
Thank you for letting me speak. Carl Shoemaker, I live in Bend. Mule deer are beautiful animals. I see them sometimes on Clay Street as they're migrating, usually up to the mountains to forage. If they can make it across Third Street. They migrate in seasonal cycles. I'm pretty sure everybody knows that, and so they go up to forage and mate. And the hunters like to hunt them up there, of course. And then return when the snow will start falling to find food on the flatlands. They're very skittish animals. You can't get close to them and they don't like, especially if they're walking down the road. And so if there's loud noises, cars or machinery, they just won't go through that property. So I wanted to propose a modest proposal. There are nature bridges. I've seen photographs, wide bridges made of concrete on the bottom and overlaid with dirt with plant foliage that attract animals such as mule deer to cross. And if even one were laid, laid down, say, between Bend and Redmond, that would make it much easier and safer for the deer to cross. And they would eventually figure out, oh, it's safe to cross here. And that would be a future pathway for them. Perhaps even the herds would grow after that. And that's, that's all I really wanted to talk about.
Thank you. So Carl Fundling.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Carl Fundling. Commissioners DeBona, Darren Chang. I'm here to speak about a process that was abandoned. The Gulf Five Mule Deer Overlay Process. I'd like to ask that everyone review the information published on the county website, frequently asked questions, including commissioners. Within these FAQs, our answers to the ongoing misinformation and lack of understanding. Growth will continue. It will not stop. Managing humans is imperative. Like many things we do in life, we ask professionals, in this case, ODFMW, biologists to guide us in information to make decisions, not based on emotion, but science to the best of their data sets. Science tells us many times the best practices. We might see it in the forest collaboratives. We might see it with sage grouse. And so for a visual, we have worksheets. Worksheets many times guide us. The science is for sage grouse. Well, what's best for the bird is best for the herd, we always hear. We hear about things that we should follow as a best practice. We have fact sheets on mule deer, plenty of them, from the Western Association of Fishing Wildlife biologists that gather all this data, and we have many of those fact sheets available to everyone here. I've spoken in the past. August 8th of 2019, I addressed the Commission on Community Development and Land Use. I first went to say, critical winter range just out the city limits is disappearing at alarming rate. At that point, it was the large solar array just east of town, next to a fire station I worked in for many years. I had watched the mule deer in there every winter for two or three months, living in critical winter range habitat. As I mentioned in that letter in 2019, just east of our city limits is a large solar farm with effectively a barrier to movement, removed hundreds of acres of winter range forage, only forcing more wildlife into our city limits. I could go on and on. You have that letter in the record. And again, in July 27, 2022, I also went through what I feel is important progress towards completion of the wildlife overlay and land use. Since I was with the Oregon Hunters Association as a land conservation director, winter range is crucial to wildlife survival, namely mule deer. Ninety percent of the Deschutes County residents live within winter range. We must do something to support our mule deer. And again, I'm only here to, to give a little disapproval as to the process that was upended, I guess. So thanks for your time. I would love to see some real engagement with ODFMW today as they present some facts about mule deer. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. And then Michael O'Grady.
For Casey. Yes, yes. Chair, Chair DeBona and Commissioners Chang and Dare. My, for the record, my name is Michael O'Casey, another good Scottish name, not O'Leary, but uh, yeah, it's a good.
O'Grady, but yeah, it was close.
And I just wanted to, to come in today and, and talk about the importance of mule deer as well and the county overlay process. You know, I was able to escape the smoke this last week and went back to Astoria where I grew up and we got on the Columbia River and, and got onto some great salmon fishing and came home with a couple salmon and, and was able to smoke that. And why do I bring up salmon with mule deer? I think it's just that pleasure of coming home with food for the family. And, and mule deer do the same thing, and they're really important food source. You know, subsistence isn't really talked about as much outside of tribes in Oregon anymore. But there are some families that still continue to utilize subsistence for their food sources here in central Oregon, and I try my best, you know, I still buy some, some good beef every once in a while and other chicken and other things. But just the importance of, of mule deer in our community is critical. And since the 1980s, we've gone from a high of around 300 and some thousand mule deer to down to today around 160,000. Deschutes County used to be what a lot of biologists call a mule deer factory. And we've declined over 50% in the last 20 years. And the commission has, in my opinion, a responsibility to manage the county's land use laws and land use planning in a way that is compatible with wildlife and with the growth of our community. And I was disappointed to see the work session a couple of months ago, or at the end of June, with the decision to abandon a process that had been multiple years in the making with robust public comment. And I was watching it on Zoom, unable to speak at the time, so I appreciate you allowing us to have a moment here to convey our opinions on the matter. But it was disappointing for me to see, you know, hundreds of comments, years in the making, lots of time and resources from the county, an agreement to move forward in 2021. You know, it's just been a long process, I would say, and to see it disappear in a way where we weren't able to be present for public comment was disappointing. And I think you still have a great opportunity. So I really appreciate you guys bringing in ODFMW today to talk about mule deer, because I think you're going to hear a lot about how habitat is really critical to their survival. And that includes responsible zoning to make sure that habitat maintains both on public and on private. And 188,000 acres or so that was going to be expanded for some reasonable regulations, in my opinion, was a good next step. You know, we've got so many different factors here. Same with salmon on the coast, right? You can't just say it's, it's one thing, right? So it's not gonna, we're not gonna have a silver bullet with, with land use planning, but it's one step in a process where wildlife crossings are another piece and reducing collisions, reducing poaching. All of these factors are really critical. And this was one stool in the cog, or one, one cog in the wheel, or one stool on the, on the bench, whatever it is. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. So this is citizen input. Is there anyone requesting to speak? Is anybody online? Thank you very much. At this time, consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Item number eight, public hearing and the proposed conveyance of property on Draftor Road to the Lapine, to Draftor Road in Lapine for the Foundation for Affordable Housing. It's a public hearing on the matter.
Morning, Commissioner. For the record, Kristi Ballinger, Deschutes County Property Management. We also have online Tommy Waldron with Foundation for Affordable Housing. I think he's having some audio challenges, so he may be connecting audio via his phone, so. Would you like me to start kind of with a briefing?
Yeah, so this is a public hearing on the matter, but yeah, please just lay out what we're doing here and if there's any questions from the commissioners.
Sure. So we're here today for the board to consider a conveyance of 3.27 acres on Draftor Road to Foundation for Affordable Housing. So going back in time a bit, earlier this spring, Foundation for Affordable Housing submitted a proposal to the county to purchase 3.27 acres on Draftor Road. And that would provide for affordable housing somewhere in the proximity of 124 units with a mix of housing for seniors and those that qualify. This would be at 60% AMI or below, and that all is based on what sort of funding they can provide on the project. Let's see here. So their first phase would come online in about a year and a half, I believe, and that would be for the senior community. And then Phase Two would come on one to two years after that.
Great, thank you very much. So this is three approximately one acre parcels in the city of Lapine on Draftor Road, received at the county through tax foreclosure process previously. One question is that, do the dollars get divided out for jurisdictions, the taxing districts?
So prior to a recent Supreme Court decision, the way that it works in the state of Oregon is after the county makes us, makes itself whole on the maintenance and supervision of, of tax foreclosed properties, any remaining proceeds would go back to the taxing districts. Now, due to a recent Supreme Court decision, based on a case out of Minnesota, Oregon is currently kind of revamping on how that will look. So we don't exactly know what the future holds on those proceeds, but state is working on those change in rules.
So for Deschutes County property, recover costs of holding that property over time, then there'll be X amount to be determined, it sounds like.
Seems that way. Can I weigh in further?
There you go. That's correct. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, my, my, I'm very supportive of this proposal. My questions were along this similar lines and, and basically, one thing I wanted to understand was whether these, the proceeds from these sales would take the same pathway as the proceeds from the auctioned tax foreclosed properties and that.
Historically, yes, but due to this, this upcoming change, that's, there's uncertainty there.
So yeah, then acknowledging this, this could be on an annual auction, that'd be other way for disposal of these properties, but this is a request that's come to the county and, and this is the response. So with that, let's acknowledge this is a public hearing on the matter. So is there anyone here to testify on this proposed conveyance of property? Is there anyone online? So seeing none.
Would this be the appropriate time if, if Tommy Waldron wants to say anything about the project to offer comments?
Thank you very much for that. So yeah, Mr. Waldron, if you're available via audio or however you may be connected today, please join us. So Mr. Waldron, you might have just been brought in as a participant. This is the public hearing. And if you are able to join us, please provide some information. I just know that when you're online, sometimes when you transfer, you lose track of what's going on for just a moment. Okay, we can see you now. No audio yet. They use technology. Oh, so possibly is it like star six or something if they're muted, not on their phone, but on Zoom? Or star nine? It's one of those. So yeah, there may be, even though your phone is, doesn't show mute, sometimes it's the.
And, and he also might be.
Is that it? I think I got it.
There it is.
Very good.
It's tricky because you can't even see that. Now we hear you.
Well, Commissioners, thank you for considering this project. And it's great to see you all. The project is now slated for three 39 building, 39 unit buildings, two family buildings and a senior building. We've been working with local architect and contractors to get things going and you know, we do have some due diligence to do on it, but everything's been been looking very positive. We've got pre-application funding in for it. And we plan to release our traffic studies in Phase One as soon as we can get a PSA signed. You know, we, the city's been really supportive of it. Some things to work through, but I think it could be a really great project for Lapine, the economic growth, the homeless issue, the affordability of housing in Lapine. And we're, we're just really excited to be at this point with everyone.
Great, thank you very much. So one question, maybe for both Kristi and yourself is, I know that there's a transportation area plan and Pam Lane coming up the middle there. Is that part of this, or is that just north of where Pam Lane was proposed?
There could be an impact, and when we talked to the city, the city said they would just work with it. I know that the city adopted the Wicque Junction refinement plan, but it sounds like there's some, still some flexibility in that area. So it didn't seem to be a real major concern for the city.
Okay, so Tommy, have you crossed paths with that, with that, the, the area transportation plan shows maybe a back road on the inside off of Draftor Road? So that may be something that comes up in the near future from, from your point of view, if you have these lands available.
Yeah, we have seen that. Same as what Kristi said, it's something the city said they'll, they'll deal with it at a later date. So we're not quite sure how that's going to plan out, but we do see that as a possibility.
Great, okay. Thank you very much for joining us. So being the public hearing, is there anybody else to speak on this matter? And yeah, so anything else, Tommy?
Nothing on my end, thanks.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing on this matter. So the public hearing is complete, so the next step is a possible motion or other discussion.
Oh, Kristi, I do have a question. Property number three, the 1.12 acre, it shows value of zero on our information. It's, it's zero. Yeah, so we report that information, even though it's not the, to my understanding, it's not the assessor's office typical thing that they do is, they don't typically put values or key, or renew the values in terms of real market value on county owned property. So we're reporting that for information, but it's, it's not real, it's not updated information. Okay.
So yeah, it hasn't been reassessed in a long time, so it just ended up at this number.
Right.
I, I would like to know a little bit more about kind of the interactions with the city and kind of their, their their process for evaluating this project and then, you know, potentially approving it moving forward. Can you, can you tell us a little bit more about what those steps, you know, broadly, what those steps look like?
Sure. So I did sit in on the pre-app meeting with Foundation for Affordable Housing in the city, and so Jeff Wolfschneider, city manager, was present. The, the biggest concern that the city had was potential traffic impacts because of Draftor Road and that ODOT is trying to minimize access points and in traffic coming out of those kind of side entrance or egress points off of, on and off of 97. And so one of the things, so before Affordable, Foundation for Affordable Housing was to invest more time and energy and effort into this project. They definitely want to get through the traffic impact analysis, and so that's why they wanted to move forward with entering into a purchase and sale agreement with the county. So once there, once we've got the purchase and sale agreement executed, which will be really quickly here, then they'll start down that path and then work with the city and see what that looks like. But that was really the only potential challenge that we heard during the pre-app process.
Great, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Um, yes, I move. Okay, move approval of a board order number 2023-034, authorizing the conveyance of property at two, excuse me, 52721, 52711 and 52695, Draftor Road, Lapine, to the Foundation for Affordable Housing and authorizing our Deschutes County Property Manager, Kristi Ballinger, to execute the attached, associated documents.
Second. Any other discussion?
Well, I guess related to that motion, I just want to clarify whether that holds us to a certain, to, to certain dollar amounts. You know, there, there's been an offer and there'll be further negotiation on that, but this motion doesn't require us to work with that, with that number, does it?
Well, the, the board order outlines the dollar amount for the purchase.
Okay. The, um, yeah, the one kind of additional concern question I have is with the, this recent Supreme Court decision related to tax foreclosed properties and the disposal proceeds from that. If we are not trying to recover these dollars from these foreclosed properties for the taxing districts of Deschutes County, I, I actually don't see a reason why we wouldn't consider a lower price, actually, because I think that the the housing that will be provided through this project is a great benefit to our community and, and I want to support that. And the, you know, the $500,000 is not, again, not necessarily going to Deschutes County or its, its taxing districts. So I, I'd be interested in us actually considering a, a lower, a lower price in light of this Supreme Court decision.
Well, there could be issues with that, given that the Supreme Court decision was regarding surplus funds being returned to the property owner. And so that's one of the issues as far as it's the surplus. Sorry, the surplus funds arguably should be returned to the property owner. And so that amount is not for us to judge arbitrarily decide. Rather, it should be given back.
So the previous property owner that had let the property lapse with taxes?
Correct. And I don't know what that amount is. Obviously, that, there was quite a bit of time since the property was foreclosed upon. But we would have to do some type of analysis as far as what that potential exposure would be regarding what they would possibly be entitled to.
I, you know, I'm, I'm tracking you on that, but I mean, there have been, we have, we have on a number of occasions donated or sold at, you know, just essentially discounted prices, property for affordable housing projects. And so I is, is the issue just that we already have a potential a potential agreement that I'm, I'm asking us to reconsider, or is the issue that, well, I, I, I guess, what would prevent us, preclude us from doing what we've done many times before and, and offering this property at a discounted price or, you know, in, in some cases, we have literally donated land for affordable housing projects, particularly in the city of Lapine.
Issue is, is that the Supreme Court decision has caused us to reevaluate our state foreclosure process. And so we need to be cognizant that now there's this constitutional argument that the keeping of the surplus property on the sale of these foreclosed properties for the, now it, under our, our state system, it goes, is returned to the state, correct?
Well, the taxing just, that, 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 all the local taxing districts.
Correct. So any of the governmental entities involved. Now, this Supreme Court decision has caused us to reevaluate our system, saying that technically any surplus funds have to be returned to the property owner.
Okay. So, so that, okay, so.
And, and, and there's attorneys currently that we are aware of that have been contacting counties or making arguments that they didn't sell the properties for the dollar amounts that they should have sold on the open market. So there is that concern. Now, where those claims will, will land, I don't know yet. It's too speculative.
Okay. So basically, we're locked into proceeding with this agreement or are not doing anything at all, or?
You're not locked into proceeding with this agreement, but I think if you want to reevaluate the dollar amount that you're proposing to sell it out, I think further calculations probably by county staff would be prudent in order to calculate what we think they might possibly be owed.
Okay.
And I'd just like to add, before Foundation for Affordable Housing submitted their proposal, they had an appraisal done. And so their appraisal, I don't have the price per square foot off the top of my head. I didn't put the calculations in here, but they did offer a bit lower than the appraised value. It wasn't much lower, but it was, and Tommy might know that if he's still on, he might know the dollar amount specifically, but it wasn't much lower.
And so if we proceeded with a different, you know, if we explored a different amount, we might be subject to legal challenge by representatives of the former property owner.
Potentially.
Okay. Okay. And I, I think we should probably just proceed with what we've got then.
Is Tommy still on? I, I mean, oh, I mean, I just, I, I do remember it was a bit less than what it was a price for.
Is it, am I allowed to, you know, can, can
Hi, I'm here.
Public discuss who the former owner was? I mean, if we even have that information, I have no idea how long ago these, these properties were tax foreclosed on.
1987.
Yeah, we did offer a 20% discount to the appraised value. Yeah, we did offer a 20% discount to the appraised value. And I really appreciate your thoughts on that, Phil. Certainly, we would love to get it at a lower value. We do have some really tight timelines right now that we're working with on our funding applications. So getting the PSA executed in the next couple of days is hopefully by the end of the week is really critical to keeping on those timelines at this point. So really appreciate the thought. It does make sense. But I think, given, given everything that's been discussed, it's it's probably just best to move forward. And so we can have our best shot at trying to get tax credits funded.
Thank you. Full speed ahead, please.
Hey, any other discussions? Seeing then Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number nine, request for proposal from Deschutes County Community Justice Department for new shelter and housing units for male justice-involved individuals. Thank you for joining us today. So this is MAC money, emergency order money from Governor through our central Oregon efforts.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, DV Holcomb from Community Justice. With me, I have some of our fine colleagues from Community Justice, Trevor Stevens, and parole probation officer Heather Symes. We have asked just a couple of minutes of your time this morning to share with you and seek your approval of the criteria and content of a request for proposals for a really exciting project that melds together some of our public safety and housing and shelter priorities that we have with the county. So I will turn it over to my colleagues for a quick presentation and again, a request for approval at the end. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Stevie said, my name is Trevor Stevens, and I'm the business manager for the Community Justice Department. So we are here today because we are seeking your input and approval to release an RFP. Let's see if I can get to the next slide.
We got support in the back.
There we go. Perfect, thank you. And so we're seeking your input and approval to release a RFP 2023-751. So just some initial background, this is from the Governor's Emergency Order 2302. And that order was to provide funding for counties to create emergency housing. There were specific goals laid out in that order and on the slide that kind of indicates what those were for this entire state of Oregon. In our county, COIC is managing the grant application process and the funds for our county. And so we have been working with them for this process. And next slide, please. Thank you. And so with Deschutes County parole probation, we currently supervise consistently about 25 to 30 individuals who have restrictions that prevent them from having contact with minors or that have a condition that requires them to register as a sex offender. Many of these clients are extremely, it's really extremely difficult to place these individuals in housing within central Oregon. And so many of these clients end up camping or they have access to shelter sometimes and not other times. And so just provides some interesting interesting things for our office. And I, Heather Symes is here with us today, and she just can provide some background. She supervises population and she has definitely dealt with this in the past. So Heather, if you wouldn't mind commenting on just some of the difficulties there.
Good morning, Commissioners. So the difficulty for this population is there there isn't available housing. They they come out of of institutions or off of or out of the court system and they are they're not, there's nothing available. So they are camping or, you know, just kind of transient, not no, not even a camp, a set campsite, which makes the process of supervising these these clients or this population very difficult. Trying to track them down, them having registration requirements that make it very hard for them to have to go back in every several days and update their their community location, or they they don't do it, which results in additional concerns for their their legal process troubles. They don't they don't have a stable foundation to start or build behavior change, because they're always wondering where they're going to lay their head that night. So.
Awesome. Thank you, Heather. So as part of the grant process, we received a little over a million dollars to contract with a community provider or outside provider to purchase and open a housing facility in central Oregon. The goal will be to provide eight shelter-style beds and two more long-term style beds for this population specifically. So as because of the amount and because of that process, we are issuing an RFP for that process. If we could move to the next slide. So the RFP structure, it is a 24-question RFP process, about 20-page submission limit. So we ask that they use the questions that we provided there, provide the information they need and stay within that 20-page limit to provide those applications. We just give the proposal some freedom to kind of explain what they think would be best for this process and what they could provide for central Oregon in managing this process for the department and for us as a community. So we are giving a one-month timeline. We'll send it out to local providers and also post through the Daily Journal of Commerce. And the proposal will be due September 27th of this year. Uh, next slide, please. So some of the requirements from the grant itself and also from us as a county. We, as a part of the grant process through COIC and through the Governor's Office, it must abide by low barrier principles. So what this means is that there can't be restrictions that prevent someone with a criminal background check, credit checks, or other barriers that would prevent them from coming into the house. It also means that we are still able to enforce safety requirements. And many of our individuals that we'll be working with, they're on supervision and they have those requirements. So those requirements will be part of their supervision, but not a part of the actual housing. So we're keeping those two separate. Those will remain with the individual as conditions of their supervision, but it won't be a admission requirement that they be in sober, that be sober at that time or something as a part of the housing itself. It'll be a part of their supervision requirements. So we're just keeping those separate because of way the the grant is structured. So each person will probably have a little bit of individual requirement just based on their supervision, which they will work directly with their parole probation officer on what those and what that means. So we also are asking that the provider not restrict any conditions for admission based on sex-related offenses. So or any levels. So we're asking that they consider all of the clients that release, and those are the individuals that we have the most trouble housing. So we've specifically put in the proposal that they are unable to put in any restrictions that would prevent those types of requirements. So, uh, next slide, please. And so the provider requirements are that they find a house in central location that is approved by the county. They can utilize a location that they already possibly own. We just have to work with them on that process. But what we cannot do is be taking shelter beds that are already shelter beds and converting them. It has to be brand-new beds. So that's just the requirement there. But we can work with a provider that if they have a property that may work or something, or if they want to buy a property that's more expensive, we can utilize the funds to help them make that purchase. Then we just still have to res, to agree to the requirements for that entire property in terms of the covenants and the restrictions that come into place for that. So they will provide onsite management at least 40 hours a week, and they will provide housing stability services. We also put in a preference there for certified recovery mentor services and just connection to other ancillary services that we usually see with this type of housing. So next slide, please. Just some ideas of some sample questions that we put in there, just so you guys have more kind of an idea of what it looks like. We have a question in there, just please describe any fast experience your agency has working with justice-involved individuals, including individuals who have restrictive conduct conditions or who are required to register as a sex offender. And then please describe what process you will use to find a location in central Oregon, outline the challenges that you anticipate, outline any feedback process that you will put in place for the community, and then also outline how you will work within restrictions because of this population. There are specific OARs in place where this individuals cannot be near a park, a school, or a place where children congregate. So how will they work within those restrictions? Just asking these providers to really provide us some examples of how they would really do that in that process. A few additional, next slide, please. Sample questions include, imagine you have found the perfect location for the house, you are heading in to sign the papers and complete the purchase. You receive a phone call from an angry angry neighbor who has learned that the house is going to be there. What would you tell that neighbor and how would you handle that? We really want this provider to work well with the community and really reach out to those individuals of where this location is going to be. So we really want to get an idea before we decide on who we're going to select, how they would do that, and what process they would use for that. So other questions include, what do you anticipate being the biggest challenges for this property? And then just what kind of staffing and management arrangements would you propose for this type of housing process? So at this time, we were just, next slide, please. We would just like to seek the board if they have any other questions they would like us to add or any other specific things they would really make, want us to make sure we pull out for the RFP process. So I will defer to you if you have any additional things that you would like us to make sure we add in there.
So Trevor, not how close, what is the the distance from a park or a school?
You hit one with the exact.
Yeah, I believe it's 1,000 feet.
Okay. But does that mean they can be closer than that to a neighborhood?
It could, it could be within a neighborhood. It is a possibility. Yeah.
Okay.
What does a business model look like for the operator? As in, is there reoccurring revenue? Is there a rental requirement? Is that paid by parole probation or the registered person being?
All of the above. So some of the, some of the clients that we have actually have resources to be able to pay for housing and they just can't find a spot. Other places where people will be releasing them from prison, we pay for some of that through treatment transition funds. So it'll be actually a combination of all of the above for that type of funding model.
That'll be part of this also.
Yes, and that's.
Nice to have the seed funds, but then
Yeah.
keeping it, keeping the doors open and keeping it maintained.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, throughout the process, by providing such a nice upfront amount to purchase the property, that creates a huge amount of equity, obviously, in the property. And I guess there are different programs around the state sort of utilize equity in a different way for operational costs. So it's a really great way. The grant wouldn't really pay for operational costs because it's got to be completed. Somebody, you know, is taking occupancy January 10th, 2024. But by creating this huge equity, there's a way to be creative and for them to utilize that in terms of their ongoing operational costs, in addition to any kind of client-by-client rent or subsidy that we might provide through our normal process that's already budgeted for.
I I don't have any questions. I think this is a really well-thought-out proposal. I'm glad that the the MAC and the state recognize that. And, you know, I appreciate what adult PNP is trying to do here to both to both improve and enhance supervision of of the the people who you are supposed to be supervising and also to address of one of the subpopulations of homeless in our community and you know, provide opportunities for those people to exit homelessness. So thank you.
Thank you. And the next slide, please.
One more slide. Now then, display.
And I can just summarize there. So in terms of the considerations that we're considering, really, we're really looking at that unique site requirements, just the public safety concerns that come with those and just making sure that the provider has some expertise around dealing with this population and just providing the service for our community. Next slide. This just kind of outlines our evaluation criteria that we plan to utilize. You will see in there, as you mentioned, Commissioner DeBonne, for financial creativity, we put something in there just to kind of really look at whether or not the individual, what kind of things they put in place to kind of make sure this facility is able to operate for a long term throughout the entire process. So. And the next slide. So what parole probation's role will be is that we will provide some additional supports in the terms of public safety and accountability and some behavior change. And Heather will just provide some examples of just what she does for home visits that this property could expect. This just provides a different sort of accountability than just a traditional housing or shelter space. So.
So the great thing about these kind of communal housing is you can meet with not only the person that you're there to see or the person that you supervise, but also the other people in the home. They all expect and know that you'll be coming by. You can get multiple home visits done a week, depending on how many people on supervision are living in that residence and what different officers are supervised by. You, we can, we go in, we walk through the residence. Any common areas or places that the person that we supervise is controlling or occupying. So it leads to usually, in my experience, a lot of compliance, because they, you know, everybody in the home knows that somebody's PO is going to show up at some point and and walk through. And it also gives a lot of opportunity for us to to speak with our clients, like my client on supervision, but also, you know, my field partners that I know or somebody else that I know from the office and kind of get those updates, check in, see how they're doing, see their areas, what they've got going on. So these communal living houses are really, really nice for that. And we get, we get a lot of just interaction with clients and accountability.
And the next slide, please.
Trevor, does the property title stay in the name of the county then?
It does not. It it goes into the private provider, but a restrictive covenant is put into place for 10 years.
10 years?
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering.
And so we also provide additional support in terms of administrative support for this process. We will be retaining the grant management of this, the grant reporting. And we also have an administrative analyst who works closely with our housing, so she will work closely with this in terms of allocation, scheduling. And we do this with our current providers. So this will just be additional support that we can provide this provider that they will have to hire people for, just because it'll be part of the grant process. And also, it benefits us to have this as a resource, so we will continue to provide the support and have that connection to the house. So, and I'll turn it over to DV for our final ask. Next slide, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think we just want to thank you for listening. I know you'll see provided pending your approval on this RFP, pending that we get an actual provider that meets all qualifications and is selected. You will again see this come before you for approval of provider and then any kind of continuing updates that you may want to see. We do understand this is a unique project. We have seen it done and be successful other places. But all the pieces do have to come together and we are very concerned. We know that that the public is concerned about who who lives in their communities and who their neighbors are. So we want to be really upfront, transparent, and answer questions for you as you get them. And of course, as our provider, are we ourselves get them. So we thank you. Any last questions, of course? If you have any additions, revisions that you'd like to see on the qualifications? Or at this time, we request your approval of RFP document 2023.751.
So yeah, I support this RFP. It's just kind of open-ended. Let's start the discussion. This is the public, you know, presentation of this matter to make sure people understand what we're talking about. The Multi-Agency Coordination Committee, the MAC Committee, that received these dollars from the Governor's Emergency Orders, has already basically said, oh, you know, it's worth a million dollars and it will help with a subpopulation. So this is a community effort in many aspects, and this is the starting point, putting the RFP out to the world. Any other discussion or motion?
I'll move to authorize staff to issue document number 2023-751, a request for proposals for a new shelter and housing units for male justice-involved individuals.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? Seeing then Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Item number 10, deliberations repeal of the conventional housing combining zone. So this is deliberations on the matter hearing previously. Thanks for joining us, Rachel.
Right. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Rachel Vickers, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. The item before us today is deliberations to repeal DCC 18.92, the conventional housing combining zone. Just a quick recap, this staff-initiated text amendment is twofold. First, to bring us in alignment with some recent updates to state statute. And second, this repeal is identified on the 2020 rural housing profile as a way to bring more affordable housing options to the county. The board held a public hearing two weeks ago on August 9th and closed the oral record and left the written record open for one week. At, in that time, staff confirmed all record materials, including the PC packet, were uploaded to the record. Staff did receive one public comment during the open record period in opposition to the proposal, which included a list of questions as well as concerns about availability of time to respond to the proposal. Staff responded to all of the commenter's questions and has not heard back. And as a reminder, staff received one other public comment in opposition before the planning commission hearing that also expressed similar concerns with time available to respond to the proposal. Because this is a repeal of county code and there aren't many decision points, staff has not prepared a deliberations matrix. However, staff is looking for board direction on whether you would like to, one, move approval of the amendments as drafted, two, move approval of the amendments with suggested edits or recommendations, or three, move to deny the amendments. And at this time, staff Or three, move to deny the amendments. And at this time, staff is available for questions.
Is, is the map available for display today? Just maybe hearing it for the first time.
I believe it was up.
It's part of the, yeah, package. I just.
I did not have it.
So these are, yeah, three areas. Two kind of north of Bend and one east of Bend neighborhood type, ru- rural development neighborhood type areas. I just think of the history of this, you know, how did this even come to be? There must have been a point in time in the seventies or eighties where it wasn't cool to be putting a manufactured home out there. I, I don't know exactly what it was, but.
Yeah. So I think as staff mentioned during the public hearing, there wasn't a lot of available information based on county records back then. But as much as staff could tell, these areas, the one to the west of Tumalo, one to the east of Tumalo and one to the east of Bend was created by petition. Neighborhood petition. So those property owners that signed the petition kind of set the bounds. So that's why you kind of the geological difference in areas. But while it was started by petition, it was still adopted into county code. So the process to repeal is the process we're following right now.
Well, and you know, I know from experience and we talked about it recently, the kind of the definition of a A, B, or C manufactured home. Difference between putting a home on a foundation with shingle roofs and wood siding opposed to a, a single wide trailer with, you know, maybe corrugated roof and aluminum siding. So big difference. But as I say, we don't even see as much of that anymore. So that just feels like this was a, a point in time. So it's kind of a thumbs up, thumbs down. Were there any edits today?
Yeah, yeah. So we'd just be looking for one of those three motions to either repeal as proposed, make any changes or deny the amendments. And the document I can give a reference is ordinance number 2023 dash zero one nine.
Any other thoughts?
Well, they've definitely improved manufactured homes in today's world. They, you know, we've seen some of those, such as at the Veterans Village and they're really that the upgrades have been outstanding. So I'm, I think it's important to add this element to our county for more affordable housing. Cause there's still that cost factor that people could afford to buy a manufactured home. Maybe that's where they're going to start when they, you know, do their project and then later they're going to build something. But I think it's a good change for those three areas.
In the really big picture, we've seen in the United States how zoning and land use have been used to discriminate against low income people. In, you know, you know, across, across our 50 states and this conventional housing combining zone that we are considering today, I, I actually would identify as a discriminatory practice. That is, was trying to keep certain kinds of people out of certain areas of our community and, and I'm happy to see it go.
So, so these are deliberations on the matter. It sounds like there's support from the discussions we're having here. So either move approval as drafted or amendments.
Well, I move to approve the amendments as drafted. The staff initiated text amendment file number 247 dash 23 dash zero 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 three nine one TA to repeal the conventional housing combining zone.
Second.
So then we're going to put direction to this. Would, would we get to the ordinance today or?
I did bring the ordinance with me.
We'd be ready for that since there's no proposed edits.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's get to this vote and then even do the ordinance if we're ready. So it's been moved and seconded to show support for this following deliberations. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So as I say, even a more formal support is proposing first reading of ordinance then.
Yeah. Yeah. So the ordinance, I believe, was included.
It's, it's.
Yep. So I'm just, yeah.
Yes. So I move approval of ordinance number 2023 dash zero one nine, amending to Schutz County Code Title 18.
And sorry, just to clarify, did include two options, one by emergency and one not by emergency. So just looking for direction on the board, if you want to adopt by emergency or same, just by title.
I don't know.
You just say by emergency and emergency order?
Yes.
Entitled only.
By emergency and title only. So amended. My emotion.
Second.
So this will be for first and second reading then?
Okay, there we go. So yeah, that's going to be the for, for them, for the minutes. First and second reading by title only and by emergency. So that, that motion was made and seconded. Any other discussion? Call him for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So now I'm going to proceed with the first and second reading. This is ordinance number 2023 dash zero one nine and ordinance amending to Schutz County Code Title 18, Chapter 92 to repeal the conventional housing combining zone and declaring an emergency. And this will be second reading and ordinance, ordinance number 2023 zero one nine and ordinance amending to Schutz County Code Title 18, Chapter 92 to repeal the conventional housing combining zone and declaring an emergency. So then to complete the process, we can, a motion for adoption.
I move adoption of ordinance number 2023 dash what, zero one nine?
Yes.
And we don't need to give the title of the ordinance.
I think it's just by.
It's fine.
Yeah.
Second.
Been repeated. Okay. So our ordinance number 2023 dash zero one nine, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. There we go. It's all the way done now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
At this time, item number 11, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife deer mule presentation. And relationship building, I'll call it.
Morning Commissioners. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner. I'm here with the Oregon, or representatives from the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, not the entire agency, just a few people. This comes on the, the heels of the, the withdrawal of the mule deer inventory update project, which was alluded to earlier this morning at the end of June. So upon the conclusion of that project, the board expressed interest in hearing directly from ODFW. It was acknowledged during that project, kind of from all around, all of the comments and from ODFW as well as other experts that the issues facing influencing mule deer population decline, you know, that project was addressing the specific land use regulations. But, you know, people recognize that this is a multifaceted issue. So upon the conclusion of that project, which only kind of was addressing one aspect of that, we have ODFW here to address, just talk about their efforts. Currently in the past, in the future, to look at this holistically, the issues of mule deer population decline in the region. They're going to give a presentation and I'll let you introduce all of your team yourself. And then they'll open it up to Q and A from, from the board. So thanks so much to ODFW for, for being here. And I'll just sit back and let you, let you go. Thanks.
Excellent.
As I say, thanks for joining us. As part of this is just relationship building and, you know, communication back and forth, education for both parties and, you know, for the community also. So, yeah, let's just start with that.
Excellent. Good morning Commissioners. Thanks, thanks for having us. My name's Andrew Walsh. I'm the District Wildlife Biologist for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, based in the Bend office here. And I'll let Corey introduce himself.
Yeah, Chair DeBonne, Commissioners, my name is Corey Heath. I'm the Deschutes Watershed Manager, also based here in Bend. Also with us today, we have two habitat biologists that you may encounter in the course of our, our work and your work in, in the future that may testify in front of you. We have Jamie Bowles. She's our Deschutes Watershed Habitat Biologist. And Jessica Clark is the, the District Habitat Biologist, also both, both based here in Bend. The areas of responsibility, I might add, you know, like for myself, I oversee parts of, all our parts of 10 different counties. Jamie works in the same area. Andrew and Jessica are, are local. They have all our parts of four different counties here locally. So.
Great. Thank you.
Excellent. I'll see if this.
Yep, perfect. It's working.
So yeah, well, kind of just wanted to start off with a few, few primer slides. You know, everything falls back to our, our missions. And, and the mission of ODFW is to protect and enhance Oregon's fish and wildlife and their habitats for use and enjoyment by present and future generations. So that's what frames, you know, every truck, everything we, we try to do. You know, and our role in land use primarily when it comes to land use, ODFW is, is a non-regulatory agency. You know, we provide information and science-based recommendations to counties. But otherwise we're, we're kind of relying on the counties and, and their implementation of the, the statewide goal five. You know, protections for wildlife habitat and other, other natural features. You know, we do have a, a state habitat, wildlife habitat mitigation policy that's in the Oregon Administrative Rule. We do reference that occasionally on larger scale projects, especially, you know, like, like big game winter range impacts that calls for no net loss of habitat quality or, or quantity and to provide a net benefit. But again, primarily it's, it's those goal five protections that, you know, county by county throughout the state are providing the protection for wildlife.
So a little bit of help with the terminology there. So the second item was mitigation policy category two habitats. Can you explain that?
Yes. So there's, there's six different categories of habitats in that, that OAR. Category two being kind of the, you know, second from the top, you know, essential and limited. You know, category one would be like irreplaceable. And then kind of down the, down the chart until you get to, you know, like a, like a, a parking lot, you know, category six. So being essential and limited on the, on the landscape is that's what triggers that that requirement to provide no net loss and a net benefit because of just the limited nature of whatever habitat we're talking about. That's category two. In this case, big game winner range, the limited nature of that on the landscape. And I'll go a little bit more into some winter range information in a couple of slides.
Well, so just, so the goal five planning process, is that a different path than this, the habitat mitigation policy or?
Ye- yes, in that the goal five process is, is kind of a county adopted, you know, that's the arena you guys work in. And then as a state agency, occasionally we will fall back on that state policy, the Oregon Administrative Rule.
Great, thank you.
So just a little bit more background of how we do our jobs as wildlife managers for the state of Oregon. On the left-hand part of the slide there, you can see how we've divided the state up into 65 or so different wildlife management units, WMUs. That's the, generally the scale that we collect data and manage most, especially game species of wildlife at. And on the right-hand side of your slide, I threw a couple of different boundaries over the top of each other. You can see Deschutes County's outline in blue there. The overall big red outline is, is the district that I'm responsible for based out of the Bend office, that Deschutes Wildlife District. It encompasses like Corey mentioned, you know, parts of four counties, obviously Deschutes is the primary county. But I've also got substantial portions of Jefferson, Flameth and Lake Counties. 3.6 million acres of, of, of habitat out there. And also the black underlying lines there are those WMUs like in that, the other image on the slide there. So kind of, I, I wanted to highlight this because in the past, there's been questions about how many, what's the population of XYZ wildlife species in Deschutes County? And that's just not the scale at which we count or manage wildlife. We're doing it at this WMU scales. And you can see the overlap of, of how the county, it's, it's a messy boundary issue. You know, as a statewide agency, we're managing them on those wildlife management unit levels. So just to focus for a second on, on some mule deer winter range, since it's been a, a hot topic the last few years.
Pardon me, going back one again. I just, just got it as you were saying. So is on the right side, is that three wild mice, wildlife management units?
Yeah. So it's, it's parts of five, but the Metolius is the furthest north there. And then the upper Deschutes, kind of west of Bend here, west of Highway 97 and the Polino east of Highway 97, then out on the.
So it's not including all of three. It's all of three plus parts of other ones. So yeah, I was just coming to that as I was looking at the map as you changed the.
Yep, exactly. And, and, and yeah, so that it just makes for, you know, we share split units with our neighbors, you know, like the, like even you can see the eastern portion of Deschutes County there is outside of my district, north of Highway 20. So that's managed by my counterpart out of Prineville, our Prineville office. So there's, it just leads to some messy boundary things when it's a county-specific process and question.
Okay, thank you.
So mule deer winter range, what is it? It's, you know, generally speaking, it's, it's lower elevation areas that provide the necessary shrubs for forage, security cover, thermal refuge during the cold winter months. Relatively less snowpack than the higher elevations where they, where they spend their summers. You know, it's, as we're saying, it's, it's limited on many, many landscapes. And so that, that's why it's always been kind of the, the most important habitat, you know, through historic wildlife management, those important habitat for big game management. You know, when a mule deer is on their winter range, they're, when a mule deer, in the winter months, the body condition of mule deer is, is declining. And our goal is just to, to, you know, reduce that decline as much as we can by having intact habitat. That, that is, makes all the difference whether they're going to make it through that winter and, and be in good shape going into the next spring to have their fawns. You know, the winter range habitat in these lower elevations is naturally, you know, where a lot of human development occurs for the same, same reasons. You know, we want to be down out of the snow in the winter time and it's generally the flatter, more developable land. So that, that leads to the susceptibility of, of mule deer winter range to, to disturbance and fragmentation through, throughout the West. It's, it's not a, not a central Oregon unique issue. It's, it's throughout mule deer range in the Western United States. So this, this just shows kind of the trend of our mule deer population estimates here locally, just in the, the Deschutes District. The red line is, is the management objective of where, you know, the populations, what our target populations based on the management objectives are set by, you know, public processes. So this is what members of the public and the agency have decided we're managing towards. So this is, this is the, you know, where the trend has been going locally and throughout most of, of Eastern Oregon. So just kind of a little bit more background on how we do what we do. A lot of, a lot of the management is driven by the numbers we gain, the data. And this is how we collect the majority of, of our data on mule deer. I'll start on the right-hand part of the slide there with our surveys. In the fall, generally December time, after, after hunting season, we get our ratios of mule deer, both buck to doe ratios and fawn to doe ratios. And that, that's right as winter is starting up, they're down their winter range, they've made it through fall. So we, we get those, those ratios for management of the population. And then later, late winter, February, March is when we get our estimates for the population of mule deer. They're concentrated down on their winter range, which is generally more open habitat where we're able to count them from the helicopter. So we, we do a, a survey technique that's kind of a strand them ran, random sample and run it through a statistical model. To get our best population estimate for mule deer that are existing on that winter range. Right now we're doing that every three years in any given area across Eastern Oregon. And then a little later in the spring, right as they're kind of coming out of that winter is when we get our doe or fawn to adult ratios. And you're able to calculate a rough overwinter fawn survival. Winter's obviously the hardest on fawns. They have the, the, you know, smallest body size and greatest, greatest, you know, loss of heat and struggle to get through deep snow and those sorts of things. So that's how we kind of get our ratios that we, we manage towards. On the, on the left-hand side of the slide there is, is how we get a lot of our really precise and, and useful spatial data on mule deer. GPS collars have came a long way in the last decade or, or so, instead of just the old style. GPS collars, um, have came a long way in the last decade or, or so, um, instead of just the old style, um, you know, VHF telemetry collars where you have to go out with a wand and, and try to triangulate where the deer are. These collars are hooked up to satellites, um, collecting two to five locations a day for up to three years and uploading those locations to the satellite. So you're able to.
You're in a cell phone, you know where you're at.
Yeah, yep, exactly. And we're able to go on, online at our, at our desk, well, these deer are still out there on the landscape and see exactly where they, where they are at the last location. Um, so super valuable, precise data for winter and summer range identification, migration route identification. Um, and also how they're using that habitat, um, you know, what areas on the land they're preferring. Um, all, as well as, you know, when we collar an animal, we get a notification when it dies. We get survival rates, cause of mortality, those sorts of things. Uh, real quick, just this locally, this is a lot of the data we fall back on. It was called the South Central Mule Deer Study. And it collared a huge number of mule deer from, kind of from just north of Bend here, all the way down through, um, you know, Clameth and Lake Counties. As part of a, part of a large-scale project with those GPS collars. And this data has been used in many ways, including the highway ninety-seven crossings I'm going to talk about in a little bit. As well as creating a couple habitat use models of how these, these deer are using the landscape, both in summer and winter time. I throw this slide up there just to give you an idea of some of that spatial data. Um, it's pretty cool. Uh, representation, you see it's basically Deschutes County we're looking at there. Each different color is a individual mule deer doe, and those are the, the, the dots, you know, of her seasonal movement. So you can see some of them, you know, move, move a little between summer and winter and others, you know, in the southern part of the county and down in the Lake County. Those deer out on the desert are making huge migrations every year from their winter time out on the lower elevations up into the higher elevation forest for the summer. Um, so that's just kind of an idea of what some of that data looks like on the backend. And then, you know, we can, we can put it through statistical, um, you know, create models, um, to be able to identify the statistical relevance of, of these different areas and usefulness to mule deer. I've used this slide a lot through, um, the previous process and, and the previous public meetings, uh, and I'm going to run through it right now really quickly and then drill in on each of these different topics through the, the rest of the presentation. Um, so, you know, mule deer, again, this isn't a, a situation unique to Central Oregon. They're declining through much of their range throughout the West and certainly in most of Eastern Oregon. What are the factors? Well, there's no, there's no one factor. Um, we're, we're coming out of a, or well, hopefully coming out of, hopefully we have a few more good wet springs like we've just had, but we're in the midst of a historic drought. That does not help. Um, you know, and roadkill with, with increased highway, highway traffic on all of our roads. Um, that's, that's a factor. Disease is a factor. Again, I'm going to drill in on these more going forward. Um, predation disturbance, habitat alteration and fragmentation. Um, you know, these all have a, an impact on mule deer and other wildlife, um, whether it's a direct impact like predation or roadkill or indirect impact, um, that's just impacting the fitness of them, of them, like habitat and disturbance. It's when we have a collared deer that, that we get a notification that it's died, it's, and you go out there and it was killed by a cougar. That's a pretty easy to identify proximal cause of death. But what you don't see is, is whether the fitness of that deer was, was reduced via disturbance on their winter range or, you know, i- impacted habitat, um, you know, the fitness of those deer is, is tougher to quantify, but it's all part of the equation. It can lead them, make them more susceptible to disease. Um, predation, roadkill, if they're having to move around because the habitat's inferior, it's, it's all connected and, and not, not, um, not super clean cut when it comes to, to these factors. But what we do know is kind of the, the depressing fact at the bottom of the slide there, um, through our current research over the last eight years. For the area west of Bend here, the Metolius and the upper Deschutes Wildlife Management Units, the adult does that we have collared out there have a seventy percent annual survival rate. Um, that is the lowest in, in Eastern Oregon and in our mule deer herds. You know, kind of a ba- benchmark baseline is eighty percent annual survival by, by adult does to kind of maintain a habitat or a, a population. Assuming you have decent fawn ratios, um, so it's just mathematically not possible to maintain or grow a mule deer herd with that annual survival of those. It's going to go down. Um, and that's, that's where we're at locally here. Um, so to kind of zoom in, I know it's a little bit of a busy slide, but, but, um, the first thing folks always, well, some, sometimes we hear, you know, why are you still hunting mule deer if the populations, you know, are, are in decline? So, you know, we like to point out a few things, um, you know, we've drastically reduced mule deer tags locally and throughout most of Eastern Oregon. You know, in, in nineteen ninety-one, mule deer hunting went from just general season, anybody can get a tag and go hunting to a controlled draw lottery system where it, 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 we're able, we are able to limit the number of hunters in every, any given area um, in those wildlife management units. So in the bar graph on the bottom there is just an example of three of the local units here, the upper Deschutes, the Polina and the Metolius and, and the, the drop in tag numbers, um, that we have in those areas since, since that change. One more thing to point out, um, we do not hunt does in, um, most, most of Eastern Oregon, but central, central Oregon, we're not, we're not hunting mule deer does anymore. This is buck only harvest. And we manage for those post-hunting season buck ratio management objectives that I mentioned earlier in our, our surveys in December, after hunting season, when we get those bucks per hundred does in the top, kind of top chart there in the black font, you can see our, our, we have management objectives, um, not just for the population numbers, but also for our buck ratios where we want to see those buck ratios. And locally, it's either fifteen bucks per one hundred does or twenty-five bucks per one hundred does. Again, that's a kind of a publicly decided on number, um, and generally we are, we are at or above that ratio. Um, after our hunting seasons here locally, and you can see where we were after this last one, um, above all of them. So you know, the, the science behind that is that there's, there's bucks available on the landscape after your hunting season to breed those does in November and December. Um, you're not, you're not causing population decline because there are does out there that aren't getting bred. You have plenty of bucks available. That's.
Andrew, when, when we, when we see poaching, I mean, people, many people have identified poaching as a concern in, in our, in our region. Are people poaching male and female deer? I mean, it's, is it, is it pretty indiscriminate or is it?
Yeah. Yeah. And, and that's a good question, Commissioner. Um, it can, it can certainly be both and, and we all have a slide about our poaching, um, initiative in a bit here, but it kind of depends on their focus, right? Certainly some people are out there looking for, you know, trophy antlers and they, they, they poach. Um, you know, those, those large males, um, but also if, if people are poaching more as a, you're looking for meat, objective, then they're probably fairly indiscriminate. And that's when, you know, some doe, doe poaching would happen for sure. So yeah, that's, that's kind of the, the science behind hunting and, and management. And where, where we are locally with that. So to move through, um, these, these are all kind of new slides that I haven't given in the, the previous talks. Move through kind of what ODFW does for mule deer to address all these other factors. Um, habitat work, um, in two thousand nine, ODFW created the Mule Deer Initiative. It was a commitment to try to address declining mule deer populations, um, fourteen years ago. You know, and, and the Mule Deer Initiative was this large, large project and it included habitat improvement, predator control, uh, changes in regulations and new survey method, methodologies to estimate our populations and select, in a few select wildlife management units throughout Eastern Oregon. Um, so just to drill down on the habitat part of the Mule Deer Initiative for a bit, um, the first phase, the first five years, twenty ten to twenty fifteen, eighteen million dollars was spent on habitat work, um, treating two hundred and sixty-six thousand acres or, or units of treatment. Um, I will point out eighty-seven percent of those funds came from partners, you know, often federal agencies, us leveraging federal funds with our, with our state hunter dollars. Um, so it's not, not a, not a solely ODFW thing. It's a very collaborative across, across other agencies and, and, and interest groups. The second phase, twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen, another twenty-five and a half million dollars was spent on habitat work. Looking at three hundred and eighty-seven thousand treatment units. Again, the majority of that is from, from partners, um, and we're kind of strategically across the landscape, leveraging these, these funds, both on public and private lands. Um, and just to kind of tease out juniper cutting, because that's one of the big habitat improvements we do here in Central Oregon. Um, so, so thirteen point six million dollars were spent on juniper cuts during that second phase, um, totaling a hundred and thirty-three thousand acres. Um, so the photo here on the right is, is an example of a u- a, a, a unit on private land out of Prineville that we, we treated as part of the Mule Deer Initiative. And you can see, you can see the juniper, you know, it's a very even stand of, of relatively young juniper coming up through that shrub. That shrub, um, ecosystem, you can see the bitter brush and sage brush and, and bunch grasses. And what's happening is that's all post-European settlement juniper. It's, you know, forty or sixty years old since fire suppression really um, took over, um, we got really good at putting out fires. The juniper is really expanded in range and what happens is it takes over these stands. This is a stand of phase two juniper that's, that's actively growing, using up a lot of water, and it also crowds out all that good bitter brush and shrub component that naturally with a normal fire regime is what would dominate that stand. And that's what's, you know, important for mule deer on their winter range is that shrub component. Um, so that's kind of an example of, of the habitat work and, and some of the juniper treatments we've done locally.
Was that done in Crook County or in Deschutes?
So that, that one was Crook County, um, as part of the Mule Deer Initiative, the Maori unit, south of Prineville was one of those select, select areas, uh, but there certainly are a lot of juniper cuts, you know, through the BLM and other entities that, that we participate in through, through, um, in Deschutes County.
And then do you have a kind of a, a rule of thumb? Is this making a difference? Is this, uh, you know, two thousand ten to fifteen efforts? Do you look back thinking, man, we got something done there or sure spent a lot of money on that?
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's tough with habitat work because, you know, it takes a while for the stand to respond, um, for the landscapes to respond. So the best, the best you do is, is make good habitat out there and, and, you know, it takes a while for, you know, wildlife populations to rebound even after, after the stand of vegetation rebounds. We've created a lot of really good habitat out there from mule deer and sage grouse. That's the other big species that a lot of this is leveraged off of. So, so yeah, it's, it's, um, yeah, it's created a lot of good habitat.
The Mule Deer Initiative, is that statewide or Eastern Oregon or Central Oregon? Or what's the scope of that?
Yep. So it's, it's throughout the range of mule deer in, in Oregon, which is east of the Cascade Crest. Yep. So, um, another, another, you know, hot topic is, is poaching. And, you know, it's always, always been a focus of ours, but in, in recent years, we've really drilled down with the help of a lot of key legislation um, in twenty nineteen that was passed to really put a focus on the poaching of fish and wildlife. For those that don't know, the, we are not, um, game wardens in the ODA, in the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. We rely on our sister agency with the Oregon State Police. They have a fish and wildlife division that does our law enforcement work for us. So, you know, we work hand in hand with, with those folks, um, and, and they, they're the, they're the ones out there, you know, writing the tickets and, and doing the, the, the operations. They've been able to gain, um, two specially trained dogs you may have seen in the, in the news, um, to just focus on poaching cases since this, you know, over the last two, three or four years. Um, as well as in twenty twenty-two, the Oregon Department of Justice hired the first anti-poaching prosecutor who's just, you know, kind of a statewide roving, focused on poaching cases, which should really help a lot, um, you know. These poaching cases are really important to us, but they're not always the most important thing going on for a, a, a county prosecutor. So that, that's, that's, um, a really helpful addition to this anti-poaching initiative, um, as well as, you know, ODFW through that legislative action, um, now has a, a new position that, that is just focused solely on, on this effort, anti-poaching coordinator. Um, and they have just, within the last month, I think, launched this new website at the bottom of the page here, protectorganswildlife.com. You know, with a lot of partners on all different sides of wildlife. Um, you know, the wildlife spectrum, every, you know, everybody can join hands and be out way, raising awareness and being against, um, poaching. Predation, um, cougar management, you know, cougars certainly are, you know, a, a top predator on the landscape. Um, and deer, mule deer and black-tailed deer are their primary prey species. In nineteen ninety-four, ballot measure eighteen was passed in Oregon, which banned the use of hounds to hunt cougars and bears. Which which is a, is the most effective way, if, if one is to want to pursue cougars as a, as a hunting opportunity. The use of hounds is by far the most effective way to do that. Um, so since, since that was, um, take, you know, since that was, was outlawed, um, numbers of cougars have certainly increased in Oregon. I included from our, our late, you know, we manage all, all species of game wildlife. We have a management plan for. The Oregon Cougar Management Plan was last updated in two thousand seventeen and, and put through our, our Fish and Wildlife Commission. So that's, that's what guides our management.
So Andrew, the number here, it says it's from fifteen. So what do you, and the estimate's sixty-four ninety-three. What's your estimate now?
It's, it's, should be close to that. So that, tho- those numbers are from that two thousand seventeen management plan. Um, so we don't have a, we don't have a survey methodology to fly around in a helicopter and count cougars. They, you know, they don't, unfortunately, you know, for, for trying to figure out the exact number of them, they don't all go congregate like mule deer or elk do for us to count. So we rely on, we rely on modeling the populations via the samples we get whenever one is harvested or taken on damage or hit by a car. We get, we get, we take teeth samples from it to get their age. If it's a female, we take the reproductive tract out of it to be able to identify how many litters of kittens they've had, how many kittens per litter, and then the age of that animal, and that all gets plugged into a model and you're modeling the populations. But that mid-six thousand seems to be the, the current estimate. There. So the other thing I'll point out, um, on the slide is the map of Oregon there, the way we estimate those populations broken out geographically in those different zones. It's a little, little small to see, but it's the, the state's divided into six different zones. And, and of course, since we're in the middle of the state, Deschutes County, I think is part of three of those zones. So when there's a cougar killed, you know, we, we put it in one of these zones via what wildlife management unit it was taken in. But that's not, that's not going to help get a, a population estimate of, of county. And, and not only that, but those zones encompass, you know, large swaths of the state that we're getting these estimates at. So yeah, again, just a, uh, you know, a geographic and, and, and distribution, you know, dividing the state up issue. Um, I will mention we, we've, you know, had cougar target areas in the past, um, spent, you can see the, the, the figures on there, um, in different parts of the state to target cougars and administrated or remove them. And some of that was due, was during the Mule Deer Initiative projects. Um, and it's kind of had, you know, mixed results, the impacts on, on, you know, deer and elk populations. One thing about target areas is, is they, once you stop, the cougar population rebounds really quickly. Um, it's a, it's a maintenance thing that you have to keep doing if you're trying to have an impact on prey species out there. So another, another hot topic, especially lately, which is, which is a good thing, um, is, is, is wildlife migration and highway crossings. Through, through a lot of different data, including that South Central study that I talked about earlier and ODOT collision data, um, which I think is what the map on the screen there is, it's showing the hotspots for deer collisions on at least ODOT managed roads. You know, we've, we've been able to create a, an effort of, of getting crossings incorporated, especially on highway ninety-seven as the widening project moves south. You know, we have three different crossing structures, crossing, you know, segments with, with a couple of structures each on ninety-seven now, working south and, and the partnerships with ODOT and legislative support and the Oregon Wildlife, um, Foundation, as well as many other groups are helping with the fundraising. These things aren't cheap, um, and also the maintenance, uh, you know, our. And also the maintenance, you know, our local Bend O H A Hunting Group here, single handedly is does the maintenance on the fence at these crossings on Highway ninety seven a couple of times a year. And it's a fantastic partnership that that that, you know, shouldn't be overlooked. But but there's just so much data coming out now, you know, whether we did a big ODFW just completed the OCAMP project, which is the Oregon Connectivity and Mapping Project. So it's a statewide, you know, really handy map that shows some pri- pri- priority. Priority crossing areas throughout the state that we're working through. You may have heard of an effort locally on Highway twenty. You know, a kind of the border of Deschutes and Jefferson County. There's a work, large working group working, working on the feasibility of some crossing structures there. We all know how busy the highways are now compared to maybe twenty five or thirty years ago. And that that certainly makes makes an impact, especially on these mule deer that are crossing at least twice a year. If they're a migratory deer, they're having to cross Highway twenty or Highway ninety seven, or sometimes both at least twice a year. So you can see the the trail cam photo down there from one of the new crossings down around Gilchrist. That's from this last winter and a nice big group of mule deer following another group of mule deer under the crossings. And the bottom right, it's a pretty slick publication that ODFW just completed. I have a copy. I'm gonna get to each of you when I'm done done talking here. But but it's a pretty, pretty good outline of how we gather the data and what we're doing with it when it comes to connectivity. And the wildlife license plate, I'm sure you're starting to see more and more in town. That's a Oregon Wildlife Foundation effort that is is directing money towards wildlife passage throughout the state. Public land management, as you guys, as the commission knows, eighty percent of land in Deschutes County is publicly owned. It's a lot of it's really important mule deer habitat, both summer and winter habitat. ODFW is not a land manager, except for, you know, a few, a few of our wildlife wildlife areas that we do own the property. None of those are in Deschutes County. Otherwise, you know, we rely on on partnerships and cooperation with those land managers, primarily Forest Service and BLM here locally. You know, cooperative TMA is you, you're probably familiar with some of our winter road closures. That's the Tumalo map on the screen there, here west of town, December first through March thirty first. Select roads in there are closed to motorized vehicles to try to just give those, give the wildlife a break.
What's a TMA?
The travel management area. Sorry. Thank you. I tried to keep that.
I was looking for it up and down there.
Yes, thank you. Travel management area. So during select times of the year, we're through cooperation with those federal agencies and affected private landowners closing all but a few of the mainline roads to motorize travel. You know, in the wintertime, it's it's pretty important. We have the Tumalo one, we have one up in the Metolius, and then we have one down around Fort Rock. In those key winter ranges to hopefully just not bump those deer, elk and other wintering wildlife around as much. So that's one, one tool for wildlife management on public land. Also, you know, we're pretty involved with commenting on US Forest Service and BLM projects. At all phases, you know, through through their their scoping and implementation, we try to use some of those models that that we've created on habitat use from the South Central Study to guide their work, whether it's vegetative, fuels reduction, or recreation planning. Also, there's a new, relatively new program called the Good Neighbor Authority, which allows federal agencies to kind of have us spend some of the money that they have to do projects that they just don't have the the ability to get through. So it's a good partnership through with BLM and Forest Service that that's some areas are are doing some pretty good work with. I think we'll wrap up with disease, disease in mule deer. Chronic wasting disease, you've probably heard of, luckily, that's, as you can see on the map there of the US, it's been working its way west. It's a, it's a, it's a really tough disease. Once it gets here, it's a pry on that is really difficult to get rid of. Once it's in your herd and on your landscape, it's always fatal disease of of cervids, deer and elk. And, you know, it can persist in the soil after a deer has it and dies, it can persist in the soil and potentially be ingested by another deer. So it's it's a really bad disease. So we monitor, you know, the protocol is monitoring as much as we can to to nip it in the bud. A a couple of years ago, it was found in Idaho, not far from the northeastern Oregon border. Over the last twenty years, since it kind of came on the scene further, back further east, ODFW has processed over twenty seven thousand samples from deer and elk, just kind of screening for this. There's increased focus in recent years, a lot of federal money coming down. It's that that important of an issue nationwide. And ODFW now just recently has a dedicated CWD biologist and an operations plan that we've we've created to be ready. Couple other diseases that are that are prevalent and and persistent in central Oregon, AHD is the biggest one, adenovirus hemorrhagic disease. There's, you know, it's kind of always in the population. It it causes it's a virus that's spread by nose to nose contact. Sometimes people feeding wildlife can make it worse because they're abnormally concentrating. But it it it's a hemorrhagic disease that's causing their their chest fluid, you know, chest to fill up with fluid and and they die, you know, within a few days of getting it. Otherwise, healthy deer, you know, just 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 is not able to make it. And it flares up occasionally in central Oregon, and it has contributed to some decline in the past. You know, especially up like north of Sisters had a die off and a few other areas that has had noticeably large die offs in the past. And EHD is a is a similar disease. It's spread by biting midges. It's a little less common around here, but it's also out there on the landscape.
So the AHD said nose to nose contact, and I've heard that before, we're, you know, putting out a food pile or, you know, any kind of non-natural feeding, they end up nose to nose, which is exactly how it'll spread.
Yeah, it does. It certainly doesn't help. You're you're concentrating them more you know, artificially concentrating large groups of deer, more so than they would be out on the landscape. Yep. So kind of the final slide, this is a plug for really large process that ODFW is going through right now. Like I said before, we manage all these species based on management plans. It's been, you know, almost twenty years since our last one, our last mule deer management plan. So we're we're working through an update right now, and it's a very large process and lift with a ton of public involvement and input on all sides of of the issue. There's a couple of webpages here. If you just search, you know, ODFW mule mule deer plan update, there's a whole webpage dedicated to this stuff. But that's where, you know, and and I have a list of kind of the the rough outline of chapters we're working through. I think we're about halfway through kind of the draft chapters. We're releasing them as as we go and then doing webinars. There's there's two or three recorded webinars on there. This is a east eastern Oregon wide effort that's you know, updating a pretty substantial update of what we do and how we manage mule deer in Oregon. With that, yeah, I appreciate the the opportunity to be here and and yeah, happy to chat or have any questions.
I got a couple of questions. It's just as a property owner, green grass out in front and back of my house, is that good or bad for deer? Does it matter?
Often what, sometimes in the spring, they're targeting grass, but often what those deer are targeting within your grass is the clover or the little broadleaf. Yeah, I mean, it it's it's fine, I guess.
Yeah, just rule of thumb, I mean. And then, yeah, I mean, what I see is when the when the deer groups go through, they'll they'll walk across like the bunch grass and eat all the seeds off the top of the stem. So they're not even eating the grass per se as much as the seeds up the top everything.
Yep. Generally, deer are browsers more than than grazers. You know, elk maybe would like that grass a little more. Deer are looking for those those buds and those those nims. Yep.
What about aspen leaves and flame maple and?
Aspen leaves are like candy.
Flowers. Yeah, so I mean, and it's happening right now, you know, all summer, it's we haven't seen the deer as much. The leaves came up, but all of a sudden, every morning, there's less and less leaves all around.
Yep. It's it's like candy for them. Yeah.
That's interesting. What is it? Is it good for them?
Yeah, no, certainly. That's a natural.
And then the flowers?
Oh, no, the delphiniums. I have not seen one this summer. Like, they really love them. Okay. Now, the really sad story is we just lost the buck that was in my neighborhood. I had nine deer at my house. They they live there all the time, and we only have a mile long road. We've got a couple of slow down for the deer signs, you know, de- up and down the road. And that big buck was just killed a couple of weeks ago. And it was so sad to see, you know, and I know we've lost a couple more just on our little road that, you know, accordingly, I was told that Deschutes County picks up about four hundred deer a year. The state roads are, I think, about six hundred. And then in Bend, a hundred deer a year are killed. But I just I it was really disappointing to see the loss. And you're telling me the ratio is like one to four or something. And I'm thinking like, well, I know the herd is still around because I see them across, you know, they're still out eating like pretty religiously. So I don't, I don't really think they leave from our neighborhood.
That that feeds to one of the questions I I wanted to ask. You know, at at the root of some of the debates that we've had about mule deer and mule deer populations recently, is the question, you know, that a lot of people have about whether the population is actually declining. You know, so many people have said to me, I see them around my house all the time. I see them out in the field near my, you know, near my property all the time. Can you, can you speak a little bit about the population, you know, the overall population of deer and how people should think about town deer and, you know, other other deer that stick around residential areas year round?
Yeah, Chair DeBonne, Commissioner Chang, it's a good, good question. Mule deer definitely are declining. There's there's no question about that. Not only locally in Deschutes County, but across the east side of the state and across the west that, you know, that's it's pretty well accepted fact. Our our data supports that. Deer still are present in the city limits abandoned, a lot of other towns in central Oregon. Those typically in the summertime, those are resident deer that grew up here. They were born here as fawns. They don't migrate out. You know, I I've been here on this district in in this area for quite a while, as probably a lot of you have. We 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 used to inventory deer on Aubrey Butte right up here. We don't do that anymore. There there aren't, there are deer still there, but there aren't enough. It's all developed now. It's all houses. We used to count deer along the Deschutes Canyon Rim down where Brookswood Road is now Elk Meadow, all that. We don't do that anymore. There are deer there, but not very many. So for for people that don't know what used to be here, there are still deer around. It appears like, hell, there's a deer in my yard. There's ten deer in my yard. You know, there's plenty of deer around. That's that's not the case. You know, it's it's a fraction of what was here historically. It's a fraction of what was here in just the last twenty or thirty years. The the deer that we focus on managing are are the the deer outside of the city limits, outside of the incorporated areas where we can actually affect the change. You know, the, you know, we're not going to affect what's happened in the city limits of Bend. In the counties, you know, where deer are still migratory, we we feel we can affect the change in those areas still. So to answer your question, deer are definitely declining in spite of what appears to be plenty of deer still in the city limits. Those plenty of deer are a fraction of what used to be here locally in the city limits.
My 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 other question is around how we measure the success of our efforts. There are a a number of people who are who are have said, you know, in relation to the overlay, the winter range overlay update, to poaching efforts, to you know, predation control to while, you know, vehicle collision efforts. They say, well, how can you, how can you demonstrate to me that this is going to reverse the decline of our mule deer population if we if we do this? And, you know, part, part of what I want to emphasize to people is reversing the decline would be excellent, but just slowing the decline would also be really beneficial because we've seen such a dramatic decline in mule deer population in the last ten or twenty years. Can can you you know, that thi- this gets into probably really, really complicated and maybe undoable modeling efforts. But I mean, can you, can you speak to that a little bit? You know, how how valuable would it be just to slow the decline of of our our local mule deer populations and, you know, can we can we say whether some of the things we're doing, some of the initiatives you mentioned today, whether better protections for habitat would at least help to slow the decline?
Yeah, Chair DeBonne, Commissioner Chang, yeah, you you took the words right out of my mouth, you know, at least some of them. You know, we we've heard the same arguments from from folks, from the public and throughout this goal five overlay process of is is this going to reverse the decline of mule deer and increase the population? You know, we we can't look into the future. The best we can hope for is, like you just said, is to slow the decline. What what our hopes are is that, yeah, we will reverse the decline, stop it and reverse it. We don't know that that's going to happen. We don't know what's going to happen in the future with human population growth in the county with any other factors that we can or can't control. We 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 don't know those things. But we do know that these things that we proposed, that Andrew presented to you guys today, all these different points that we're working on that, you know, spearheading throughout eastern Oregon to try and reverse mule deer decline. We do feel confident that at least it will slow the decline of mule deer. And we hope that at least in certain places, it it can reverse the the you know, the the trend that we're seeing. You know, we we don't know that, you know, you know, climate change is a factor, drought is a factor. Changing habitat is a factor. You know, there's a lot of factors out there. The diseases are a big factor that are not curable. Several of these diseases are not curable, like Andrew mentioned. So, you know, we we do what we can do. We do the best we can do. You you folks do the best you can do to try and slow these declines and reverse the trend. And, you know, as a society, that's that's what we do, you know, if if that's our our priorities. The the reason that we came and met with you today to in the information that Andrew presented was because throughout a lot of the the goal five overlay update process that we went through with the Planning Commission, there's lots of public testimony. You know, a lot of that, we heard that this is the only thing that's happening for mule deer is trying to u- update these goal five overlays in Deschutes County. That certainly is not the case. And hopefully Andrew presented information to you today that represents that. You know, there are spearheads on all sorts of fronts, not only in Oregon, but across the west to try and reverse the trend in mule deer populations. The goal five overlay process, that was one, one small part of it of this overall big, you know, you know, Oregon process and west wide process that the county is a part of, that that the county could affect the change on.
Any words?
Oh, I just have a question. A couple of years ago, you know, when we had like five feet of snow that just would never melt. I'm wondering, did, were the deer here ever fed?
Like artificial feeding?
Right, like throwing out hay bales that's.
Not by, not by us. I'm sure, you know, private citizens were, but you know, a lot of times that's that's does more harm than good on deer that aren't used to whatever you're putting out for them. Their 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 gut biome, their stomachs are so specific on low quality forage in the winter is what their body is expecting and and ready for, that when you throw out a bunch of 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 artificial feed. You know, it's something, a lot of times you end up doing more harm than good for them. What 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 is valuable for mule deer in a bad winter like that is intact winter range where there's bitter brush and other shrubs that are that are healthy enough and tall enough to stick up through that hard crusty snow where they they're able to access that natural forage in the space they're in, and it's it's available above the snow.
So I I really appreciate all the work you're doing on the junipers. Is any of that work being done in Deschutes County?
Yeah, yeah, there's there's you know, there there's not an MDI unit in Deschutes County, but with with the BLM and the Forest Service and and all those, we do you know, leverage funds and and coordinate with them on specific, what areas would be impactful for mule deer for for any of their work, including including juniper. A lot of the work in Deschutes County with juniper is is targeted towards sage grouse out on the desert. For the same same reasons, you know, juniper is has impacted sage grouse populations.
Right, it's impacting both of them. And I just, I appreciate hearing that. So, thank you.
So what about alpha predator called a wolf out there? I mean, we don't need, we gotta start wrapping up. But yeah, any, any thoughts? I didn't see a slide on that. It just seems to be a topic of the day.
It's, it's a topic of the day and, and wolves are, um, recolonizing, you know, the east cascades. Um, you guys are familiar with the two different, you know, known groups of wolves, kind of on the northern border and the southern border of Deschutes County. Um, you know, they, 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 they target deer, but not, not like mountain lions do, not like cougars do. Um, the number of deer killed in Deschutes County by wolves would not be close to the number of Deschutes County, deer killed in Deschutes County by cougars. So that's why I focused on cougars as part of the, the, uh, presentation.
Okay.
So what do you think our county population of cougars is? I was reading some articles where, um, you know, like a year ago, there were like twenty-two were seen or something through, um, you know, more have been seen recently.
More of certain, I, I don't have a county population estimate for the reasons I kind of outlined in there with, with how we monitor those populations, but I will say more are seen. There are more cougars now than there were thirty years ago. But also there are a lot more people living along rims of rivers where, where cougar habitat is. And the, and the other, the third factor I'll mention is like ring doorbells, the video doorbell, um, security cameras. It's eighty percent of our sightings that we get reported are based on those roughly. So though that awareness people have now of what's walking in their driveway at two AM, um, that's where a lot of the sightings come from. And those, those, those cougars have been doing that, you know, well before the ring doorbell was there. So it's a, uh, increased awareness by people and more people out there to be aware is leading to a lot of those increases.
Interesting. Before we close, I just wanted to, uh, express my appreciation for ODFNW for, um, you know, doing this work every day, trying to help us understand what, how, how this incredibly important wildlife species is doing in our, in our area, our community and what we can do to be, be helping. And, uh, I especially wanted to express appreciation for that explanation of the indirect role that habitat and habitat fragmentation has on all of these other sources of mortality. Um, it's really important for people to understand that a, a malnourished deer is more likely to be caught by a predator, is more likely to not make it across the road before a vehicle hits it, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, thank you for emphasizing that. And I hope that that clarifies for some of the people who, uh, were asking a lot of questions during the, the debate of the overlay process. Uh, you know, why habitat is important.
Thank you, commissioners.
And, uh, just acknowledging, you know, what got us here today. So the planning commission, uh, you know, uh, reviewed this and, uh, you know, gave us the recommendation. There, uh, part of that recommendation was a working group or educational group, best practices group, uh, that came to us like that. Uh, you know, goal five inventories and a new wildlife overlay. That's kind of a big step. Uh, you remember our fifty-year land use system? We put our goal five inventories in, you know, thirty years ago or whatever it was. And we, nobody's done it in the whole state of Oregon since. Nobody's added to, created a new goal five inventory overlay. So it, it just kept looking bigger and bigger as we started to go through this process. So, uh, um, that's why, you know, the relationship being grounded in what's going to be, uh, a valuable effort in our community, um, uh, and putting in perspective. I, I'm just letting you know, that's, that's where I'm at, uh, you know. Yeah, it just got, it got pretty wild. So we'll leave it at that. Thank you for what you do. Uh, you know, uh, happy, healthy wildlife is something we all want to see. Thank you. Well, great. Thank you. Fresh off the press.
Thanks, Andrew.
So thanks for your patience today. We're slipping on the schedule a little bit, uh, and these are just proposed times. So at least we have the right people in the room. So item number twelve, ARPA updates and funding considerations. So American Rescue Plan dollars. We've been pleased to be able to, uh, you know, write checks to people doing good stuff for the last couple of years, basically. One of the big picture items I always think of is Deschutes County proper was not in a spot where we needed to save ourselves first. And I'm referring to COVID and financial stability and the capacity of the county. So it was nice to be able just write checks out, uh, as, as we had those dollars available. And at this point, we're kind of circling, circling back to the, maybe the final allocations or the big picture here. Thank you.
Morning commissioners. Thank you, uh, for the record, Robert Tintil, Chief Financial Officer.
Laura Skundrick, uh, management analyst.
So today we are here to hear from staff and a number of community partners on the remaining use of ARPA funds that we have available. Uh, and those will include our current funding obligations, new ARPA considerations and new requests. And actually Laura has a revised, uh, attachment that, that was included with the memo. We've had a number of last minute requests come in, and so we just wanted to make sure you had the most current information in front of you. And we'll talk through those as well as we go through the presentation. Before we begin, um, I do want to just provide a little bit of background and history on, as you mentioned, Commissioner Chair DeBonne, on the great work that the county has already done with this. As you know, Deschutes County was awarded thirty-eight point four million from the US Treasury as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. And we received those funds in two payments over two years at nineteen million dollars each. Since that time, the county has allocated approximately thirty-two million, thirty-three million dollars. And those categories range from affordable housing at seven point eight million, broadband, about four hundred thousand. Uh, a net childcare investment allocation of four point seven. I mentioned net. We had allocated some, we had some funds returned to us. Food assistance in the county of three point six million, homelessness efforts, seven point five million, job training assistance of two hundred thousand, uh, public health and COVID nineteen response of, uh, three point nine million. Small business and nonprofit assistance, two point six million. Water infrastructure, one point nine million. Mental health, fifty thousand and administration of the program and other costs of four hundred and forty-three, four hundred and forty thousand. So a wide range of, uh, categories and topics that have dead, been dedicated and, and allocated thus far. Of that thirty-three million, we have also, uh, an, a contingency of two point two million, which we will talk about today. And so including the contingency, we have about five million that still needs to be allocated out of the, um, uh, thirty-eight million we've spent, we've allocated thirty-three. So that leaves a round number of five million dollars and that's where we are today. So today's requests include, uh, projects submitted after the memo was provided. And thus that's why we update, gave you the updated handout here, uh, and we'll talk about those too. Before the board considers any action on any, any other projects, we're going to hear from staff and from community partners. And so we won't ask, um, about board action until we get to the end, until we hear through all the projects. Cause there are a number of great projects that are on the list today. Um, you will notice that the requests that we have equal about ten million dollars. And as I mentioned, there are about five million dollars, uh, remaining that can be allocated from the ARPA funds. So the first projects for the board's consideration are for current obligations. And those are, you'll find these in the attachments that you have that Laura just handed out. And really those current obligations, they're shaded in that, that grayish blue area. These obligations are projects where the board has made motions on approval of these projects. But the funding had not been for formally adopted or identified for these projects as the funding source. And so we were, uh, we were going, planning on, and we were bringing these back to the board to just finalize the current obligations the board has already made, since all of these projects are ARPA eligible. And there aren't, um, funds, additional funds for that. Um, so we'll, we will talk through those in just a moment. Uh, the next section I just want to highlight is the new ARPA considerations, and those are in some of the, uh, the yellowish shaded areas. Uh, a couple of things I want to highlight on that one. First is administration, uh, does recommend. One of the projects that's included in that is allocating two million dollars to provide
Do other people have a copy of this to follow what we're talking about here? Yes. I mean, I don't know if we can put it up, boss. So yeah, I just figured that out. We're looking in real deeply in a piece of paper here.
It was, we, there have been a couple, um, requests added, but this was part of a meeting.
Okay. So it's part of the meeting packet and there's
It was posted online, right? So if, if anyone has access as well to their computer, iPhone or phone, it's, uh, it is posted on there, just not the last two projects, which we'll talk
Okay, good. So it's two projects added is what it is. Okay.
So thank you for that. So, uh, on one of the projects on the new ARPA considerations, it's two million dollars for a homeless camp and/or supported managed camp, whatever. Yeah, that still needs to be determined. Um, but administration recommends the board consider allocation, allocating two million dollars to provide support services to two or three future managed, supported, uh, homeless camps to successfully implement the county's new camping code over the next two years. Staff does not currently have a detailed cost estimate for the supported managed camps. Costs will ultimately depend upon the approved scope of services. As you know, we've been having discussions, you all have been having discussions about these managed camps. When we look at the funding sources for that, there, there aren't general fund resources identified for that. It's not built into the long-term forecast. We do believe those services are eligible for ARPA funds and with the commitment that we have for providing these. Uh, that's also, uh, that's why this is a recommendation to use ARPA funds to fund that project as well. Um, backtracking just a little bit on the current obligations, the one point six, uh, two, five million dollars that was in, uh, again, the board approved, already made motions to approve those projects. We just had to identify the funding source. Therefore, finance recommends that the board consider allocating one point six to five of the ARPA funds for those current obligations and projects to provide the necessary funding for those projects as well. One item that we previously discussed was, uh, that is included in the memo of new ARPA considerations was the one million dollars towards county reimbursement for eligible costs that we've already incurred. Uh, that was an option that we might want to, the board can consider holding that in abeyance right now, not, um, uh, selecting that project now. We can come back for that prior to December twenty twenty-four. That project was used as a placeholder in case there are any funds returned between the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, when all funds have to be obligated and the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, when all funds have to be spent. That way we, we would have a project approved and available, uh, to reimburse ourselves for expenditures. We've already heard that we're ARPA eligible so that we could utilize all the funds without having to return to treasury. However, given we have a large number of requests that we'll be discussing today, we may want to hold off on that as well. And we can reconsider that. The board can reconsider that at a future time.
I mean, Robert, uh, looking at this front page, um, it's actually like five point nine million. And we only have five point one million available. So if we do everything on the, the front page, we can't do anything on the backside.
Correct.
Yeah. So, yeah, you've made it more difficult than we can imagine.
Yes. Yes.
Well, it's good having that county reimbursement variable, you know, it, it's plugged in at a million dollars, but that could be any number. We have a lot of eligible costs internally. And just like I started off saying, you know, we didn't have to do that. And in a kind of an emergency fashion internally, we're able to write the checks externally.
Yes. So, uh, I, that, that's a highlight of, again, the first two major, uh, sections that again, had administration recommendations and finance recommendations on the items where the board has already committed or obligated itself to consider using ARPA funds for those. Now, um, I think we'll walk through department presentations and community partner, uh, presentations and updates. Again, we do have a lot. And so I am, um, asking our audience, uh, participants, try to keep their presentations to five minutes. As a reminder, the board of commissioners were forwarded all of the proposals, um, as they came through here. So hopefully you've had a chance to review that. If not, this, uh, reminder in the summary, and then there'll be an opportunity for comments. So first I will invite health services up to talk about their, uh, two items. And while they're coming, I will mention, uh, the board had previously ca- uh, ca- allocated contingency funds for two areas related to health services. Um, and one was for a, um, actually a hundred and seventy-four, you know, the contingency. Yeah. Oh yeah, up there at the top. Thank you. Uh, public health response of six hundred and twenty-four thousand. And the other contingency for health unintended consequences of six hundred and fifty-one thousand. So those were part of the contingency and health services is here to talk about their projects.
We have a PowerPoint as well.
I think we can all squeeze.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, for the record, I'm Janice Gerso. I'm Director of Health Services. I'm here with
Emily Horton, Program Manager for Emergency Response and Preparedness and COVID Recovery.
And
and Cheryl Smallman, Business Officer for Health Services.
Holly Harris may also be
I think Holly Harris is online. I don't know if people can hear her, but I believe she's online. Um, so, um, we have a proposal, uh, for remaining ARPA funds that were specifically identified for health unintended consequences and healthcare, uh, contingencies. Um, we're proposing to retain three of the staff that are currently staffing our emergency preparedness team and allocate a small amount for crisis support for a shift that we've struggled to cover for nearly a year. Uh, it's a weekend night shift with a Q M H P. Um, the cost of covering those shifts is high, uh, when we have to reach out to a temporary staffing agency to get those covered. Um, the three FTE that are being converted, sorry?
Oh, the slides aren't.
They're not advancing. Do you want me to do it? I can do it. It's okay. I didn't realize I had the power of the slides. Um, so those are the amounts and the specific proposals on the screen. Um, I'm going to let Cheryl give you a little bit of detail about the FTE before we move forward, because I think that's important.
Sure. We have, um, three limited duration FTE that we're asking to regular and then be supported, uh, through the ARPA funds. The first is a currently a community health spec- or a supervisor position that we would intend to reclassify into a community health specialist three position. So, um, that would begin, uh, as of July one, twenty twenty-four, in that new classification. The second is a management analyst position that is currently working with county administration, um, for a number of projects, uh, project management around, uh, homeless encampments and other emergency, um, preparedness projects as well. So that would be continuing that, that particular, uh, FTE. And then the third is an admin support specialist position that currently terms December of this year. Uh, then we request, um, COVID, OHA, continued COVID funding, support that for the second half of this current fiscal year. And then ARPA funds beginning July one of twenty twenty-four.
And if you recall, when we've come before the board before on this particular subject, one of the things that we've been tracking and trying to track numerically for you, because it's been complicated, um, is that the, um, the ramp up of staffing that we relied on to help our community navigate a global pandemic and provide resources to the community, healthcare to the community, um, safety measures to the community. Uh, we've been ramping down for a period of a number of months as those funds have, uh, reduced. And as the need frankly, in the community has reduced. And when we brought a proposal to you before, one of the things we talked about is that we continue to see a need to have a core committed nimble team of talented, uh, skilled emergency response professionals in public health who are really ready to respond to emergencies. Um, many of them still related, in fact, to the impact of a pandemic on our community. Um, so an example of that would be, uh, some of the information that you've seen regularly coming out of our office related to heat and smoke events and the behind the scenes work that's associated with that information, which is reaching out to members of the community that support vulnerable populations during those kinds of events. So that's just one example. Um, the purpose of those staff um, is to, uh, help us maintain resilient communities. So continue to engage with community partners, provide outreach, educational, education and tools to vulnerable populations on how to protect themselves from health threats. Um, have an experienced preparedness team in the ready. Um, this includes also coordinating with people like, um, uh, the person that we will ultimately hire to manage our uh, medical reserve corps, for example, and to handle risk communication and logistics supports when emergencies do occur. This year specifically in relation to COVID response and recovery so far in twenty twenty-three, and I believe this is a calendar year, not a fiscal year. Okay. So since January of twenty twenty-three, uh, this team has engaged over four thousand individuals in the community and participated in thirty team has engaged over 4,000 individuals in the community and participated in 32 community events. Uh, 40 people have received wraparound supports. The hotline, which continues to operate, has received 725 phone calls related to COVID and other public health threats or in information requests. Over 48,000 individuals have subscribed to and received seven public health updates about important public health topics and how to protect themselves from emerging and seasonal health threats. Uh, and this team has helped provide project planning and coordination with multiple agencies and partners on large scale incidents affecting our houseless communities. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Cheryl to talk a little bit about the budget, what the dollars proposed are paying for and, um, take it from there.
Can you move to the next slide?
Oh, sorry.
I won't spend too much time on this. One, because it's probably hard to see on the screen, but two, you also were forwarded it. Um, so I'm happy to take any questions you might have related to it, but it outlines what positions, um, and the additional supplies, um, and what fiscal years we anticipate those supplies will be needed.
So one of the things I'm seeing here, just big picture is, uh, the, uh, health response and recovery, uh, you know, we just did the medical reserve corps. And, uh, now we're talking about adding, uh, transitioning to three new F T E. Um, it just, I'd, I'd like it not to be more F T E possibly. I mean, I don't know.
It's not new. These are existing employees who are employed today. Um, they're in limited duration positions. We anticipate that, uh, public health modernization funds, which will hopefully come through in, um, the 2527 biennium and maybe greater than.
Bridging to a different future.
So we are hoping, uh, that we are bridging some existing staff doing good work in the community until such time as modernization dollars help us cover that cost.
And it might be a little helpful to have numbers to it. So a couple of years ago, when we were in the midst of COVID, we at one point had about 27 F T E. Um, when we look forward to fiscal year 24, we're looking at a core staffing unit on the emergency team of about six.
Six including.
Including these three.
Including these three, but six, three of which may be paid for with, are already paid, some are already established, regular positions paid for with other dollars that are part of emergency response. And then one happens to be Emily, uh, who is the manager of our emergency spot, response and recovery team and is currently paid for through ARPA funds. And we are likely going to be able to transition that role to ongoing modernization dollars in this biennium. So we're really talking, and I know it's complicated, but we are talking about bridging existing staff roles, maintaining them with ARPA dollars to do the work intended by the ARPA dollars until, uh, we have, uh, modernization dollars available to cover those roles. And as always, when we request regular positions, if, if those dollars don't come through, we have decisions we have to make about whether or not to maintain those roles. So.
And you were just saying, uh, you were just talking about bridging until public health modernization dollars come for, for at least Emily's position. How many of these positions do you think would be covered by, of that team of six?
It really depends on what's awarded by the legislature and appropriated in biennium 2527. Um, you know, there were big promises made this year. They did not necessarily come through, although we ultimately fared better than we had feared, uh, which is why we can look at covering, um, the manager position through the biennium. And just to not neglect the, uh, crisis client support, this is a small portion of the ask. It's really very targeted dollars to help offset the cost or cover the cost of hiring, uh, contractors who are extremely expensive to cover shifts when we're not able to recruit staff to cover that shift. It's a weekend night shift. You can imagine. We serve some folks, uh, weekend nights at the stabilization center.
Great.
Any questions for Health Services before we move on to the next project?
So as I'm looking at kind of the ARPA considerations lines, 174,000 for crisis client support, and then the 1 million for response and recovery, uh, just in the big picture and the, and the requests that are coming down the way, I might like to see that being $500,000 instead of a million. So it's kind of working backwards from what your ask is to what looks like it might work in a, in, in the, the world of the dynamic allocation process right now. So I just wanted to say those words and we'll see where it all goes. And we don't need to make that decision right now.
Correct. Right. We'll ask for a conversation if you, if the board chair, uh, agrees at the end after we hear all the projects.
We'll work through it.
Work through that.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to mention that Nick Lee, like County Administrator should also be online. So, uh, if there comes a point where we need input as well, he's, I believe he should be, I can't see, but I believe he's on there as well. Okay. Perfect. So next we'll ask for Neighbor Impact, uh, to come up. This will also include, uh, uh, an update, uh, from the funding that they've already received and a request for the year three. As you may recall, there was also a contingency for childcare workforce development of $906,000. And this funding is, was and is out of that contingency. Hey, if you all would like to introduce yourself and thank you for being here as well.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, for the record, my name is Karen Crown, the Director at Childcare Resources with Neighbor Impact.
Uh, Denise Hudson, and I'm the Director.
I am Kenzie Kiss. I am a workforce E C E coach with Neighbor Impact. And hello, I'm Cara Davis, and I'm also an E C E coach with Neighbor Impact.
All right. Well, we could talk about this project for hours. We will try really hard to keep it to under our five minutes. Um, I wanted to start with just gratitude for, um, entrusting us with the funds to get this project off the ground. We've been able to roll out some concepts that we really wanted to test out and, um, have been able to develop additional early care and education workforce with the Fast Track project. So, um, one of the things that we were able to do is to establish a program that provided 60 hours of training. I believe it succeeded that at this point, um, to be able to provide a foundation for new teachers coming into the field, working with licensing to allow an exception, um, to get people teacher qualified quickly. Um, our new hired coaches over here going in and actually connecting that content in the training that's being, um, learned into daily practice with children. And that ongoing coaching has proved to be very, very successful to really build skill with new teachers. Um, mental health consultation, which is not something that we originally had in our proposal, but, um, we were told upfront to get creative and, you know, try, try new things with this. And so, um, we have mental consultation, mental health consultation for the teachers and, um, during this time of pandemic recovery, that's proven to be very, very helpful with the adults becoming teachers, but also with supporting, um, behavior in the classroom and really learning the why behind those behaviors and being able to develop really strong skillsets to be able to address them and support the, the growing children in the classroom. Um, we also have added a component where we're providing coaching to the leaders in the childcare programs. And COVID was a, a huge hit to leadership staff in early care and education programs. And so really building the skill of what is oftentimes new leadership to be able to do really positive reflective supervision with these new teachers and have a really consistent skillset amongst the entire team has been really helpful. Um, with our project, when we originally put in our proposal, we had asked for three years of funding. And we had one year held in reserve. And so we're coming back today to ask for that third year. We are in the middle of our third cohort that is being, um, rolled out in Deschutes County. We have, what are we at now? We're at 40, Cara, you were just giving us these numbers.
Yep. Um, 43 candidates who have gone through so far.
Okay. So 43 candidates in, um, three cohorts. It's becoming more popular as it's becoming more of an established program. And so we anticipate that as we move forward, we will continue to see, um, high usage of the project. We have placement centers who are coming back and asking for additional candidates to be trained because they have additional classrooms to be opened. Um, and we have new centers who are wanting to become part of this project. Um, I think I will stop there and allow time for questions that potentially other staff can also answer.
So you said 43, Karen? 43 people have graduated?
Um, we're in the midst of our third cohort. And so I don't know what the first two numbers were, the first two cohorts had, but by October, we will have 43 completed.
Okay. So how many could you do though? What's the capacity? Because everyone, you know, seems to be short, people applying for things. And I'm just wondering, how many, you know, could you have trained another 25?
Um, we have about a room for 11 in each of our cohorts. So 22 per, for six months.
Okay. So you feel like there's more people out there that will actually sign up?
Yes.
How many people have, are, are on the, you're waiting list then?
So what we've been doing is getting people into cohorts because we're in the middle of a cohort right now. We have interest out there, but we don't have a waitlist so far for the next cohort. People tend to be quickly scooped up if they don't get into a cohort right away. They move a different direction. And so what we're doing right now is marketing to keep interest coming. We have our pathways director with our, the other project that we're coming to you for, um, who's making sure that those people get placed right away into programs. And then we're going back to those people saying, do you want to participate in this? So we're trying to get people placed right away into programs and not, we don't currently hold a waiting list.
So someone, if someone came to you tomorrow and could you like actually fit them in somewhere then?
What we've been doing is we've been, uh, our pathways director will connect them with a program that currently has a position open as a center aide. And then we, I guess we sort of have them on an informal. Once that cohort starts, then we potentially roll that person directly into that cohort. But we also have other pathways. So it might be connecting that person with COCC classes or connecting them with OSU or another option that's out there so that we get them engaged quickly. So they feel like they're moving forward.
Um, can I ask about long-term sustainability of these programs? So we're talking about year three funding right now. Um, I'm really excited and, and happy to hear about the, the impact of year one and two funding that, that the county was able to provide. How do you, I mean, uh, even if we make an allocation today from these contingency funds, how do you continue these services and, and, you know, this important training and, and mentoring and support? How do you continue these services after year three?
Well, what we have now is data. And so we're able to show that the project is successful and we're able to show that we have new teachers going into classrooms who feel like they have a foundation that makes them more prepared to be in the field and less likely to get frustrated and leave because they were not prepared for what was going to happen when they became a teacher. So we've been taking that data, going out, having conversations. One of those conversations is with Heather Ficht with East Cascade Works. We are, we're talking about potential funding for the future for this across all of central Oregon. So that has been an ongoing conversation from day one because we, we were pretty confident that this would work and we knew this was temporary funding. So we're talking about that. We're talking to, um, Department of Early Learning and Care about what their projects look like moving forward as they move more into a world of coaching rather than simply training for new staff. And so how do we fit our, our current funding model that where we get funding from Department of Early Learning and Care? How do we match that up with our coaching model and our training model to use this proven successful model to do something more sustainable?
Thank you. So looking at our spreadsheet, uh, we have contingency childcare workforce development 906, and this is a request for, um, one of these lines here, childcare workforce, or no, workforce development at 530. Is that the two lines we're looking at?
Yeah, there's two lines.
The 142.
142 and 530.
Right. Pathways program for 142,000 and Fast Track teacher training for 530,000.
Okay. Just making sure I understand our own spreadsheet.
So if we already, um, we already gave you what? A million 60,000 for one program and what? 284,000 for the other? So how much did each teacher cost then that we've trained to date?
If you add in the full cost of the preparation to get the project up and running, if you break that out over all of the teachers, it comes out to about $9,000 per teacher. As we move forward, that overall cost will decrease. So we're spending about $160,000 per cohort. And that includes the stipend that's going to the teacher candidate for attending the additional training, especially in the evenings and on weekends. And that includes the money that's going to the childcare center for the additional, um, reflective supervision and, um, leadership staff time.
Is the market catching up at all for a living wage job? Or is that still a big disconnect?
It's starting. It, the needle's moving slowly, but, um, there's a couple of things at work in our area that are supporting that increase. One is our publicly funded programs have increased wages. So, um, when you look at places like Mountain Star, Head Start, different programs that have the public funds, those wages are going up and that naturally pushes up the other teacher wages. The other thing that's happening is a lot of business coaching. And so we have a lot of business coaching going on, support for programs to engage in multiple, multiple funding streams outside of the family's contribution. And so, um, encouraging people to look into other funding models is giving people more money and allowing them to, um, reallocate some additional money into wages. So it's slowly happening. I, I don't see it happening without a large, you know, shift, um, where we have additional funding coming from public funds into private childcare.
Yeah. So it's still a big issue though.
Yeah. Cause if we, um, if you want to raise teacher pay, which is entirely appropriate in this, in this hiring environment, um, i- if there's not public investment in that, then basically that's coming out of parents' pockets and you're, you, you've, you've gone from making, uh, early learning and childcare and unsustainable career for somebody to making, uh, childcare for your kid unaffordable to parents. Uh, there's, you know, that the math is, the math is really problematic.
Yeah, it's a broken business model and that's why we're in the situation we're in today. It, someone always has to subsidize childcare, um, whether it be on the backs of the teacher, um, whether it be outside funding in order to keep it at a reasonable manageable cost for family, there has to be a subsidy. And it's traditionally been subsidized by teachers taking very low pay, which has kept people out of the field because who wants to go to college and go into a field where you know you're going to make, um, less money than you need to support your family. So there, that's just a, a place that is a societal issue we have to figure out.
Great. Thank you. So we're just getting updates from people as we go down the list here. Correct? I mean, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great to see everybody. Thanks for what you're doing.
Uh, so the next item we'll ask you here from the Mountain View, um, Transitional Sheltering Project that's listed on your spreadsheet for 1.5 million dollars. So we do have representatives from Mountain View Community Development and, uh, Red, City of Redmond here as well. So, and online as well. So we do have a number here.
It should be Michelle, I believe.
This is on, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair DeBonne and Commissioner Chang, Commissioner DeR. Uh, Michelle's going to give a presentation by Zoom initially.
Great. There's Rick Russell. Hello. Hello, everyone. Yes.
Awesome. Commissioner DeBonne, Commissioner DeR, Commissioner Chang, thank you guys so much for having us. We feel very fortunate to be here today and are happy to have the opportunity to present. Um, Mountain View Community Development believes that if we want to see change in our homeless crisis, we must be willing to do courageous things that are beyond, um, what we see as the social norm. We feel that if we're doing what we've always done, we're going to continue to see results we've always had. So our, our V part concept was developed after looking at concepts throughout the Northwest aimed at increasing housing supply. And while many organizations are working tirelessly to address the issue, we feel as though the current programs. we feel as though the current programs we're seeing are falling short of addressing the root causes of homelessness. At Mountain View, we believe homelessness is caused by a fundamental breakdown of community. And that to begin to enact change, we must become part, we must commit to becoming the community this population is in need of. To us, this looks like public-private partnerships in which we bring business owners and local leaders together to take ownership of the process. It looks like qualified and experienced service providers, providing intensive onsite case management. And um, healthcare services. It looks like local technical programs providing workforce training so that we can support our neighbors as they begin to move away from experiencing homelessness and into becoming contributing members of our workforce. It looks like a sense of ownership and dignity associated with a chance to pay rent for a place to call home. Something we believe is a key component to the success of this project. And it looks like twenty-four seven staff and volunteers living in community with our neighbors so that we can lo- walk alongside them in life as they transition out of homelessness and into being active, involved, contributing members of our community. I know you've had the opportunity to review the um, project proposal we submitted to the board last week. As well as previously heard our in-person, in-person presentations. But I would like to take a few minutes to kind of speak to a few of the specifics of that project. We're currently in design with Tenover Studio led by Frank Thaxter on a sixty-unit RV park on the county land known as the East Redmond Campus. The site will feature full utility hookups, restroom with shower and laundry facilities. And a community building with meeting and office space for onsite case management. The three point nine eight million dollar project cost includes the substantial site work, landscape, infrastructure investment necessary to get our site operational. We've worked tirelessly to identify ongoing operational support for the community and are in the final stages of approval from Pacific Source to finance the bulk of our one point eight million dollar annual operating budget. We believe the public-private partnerships will be critical to the success of this project and look forward to continuing to work with our local business leaders and elected officials to build not only a physical space to call home, but the community our unhoused neighbors need in order to be successful and thrive as contributing members of our society. I grew up in Redmond. I'm a graduate of Redmond High and I attended Oregon State, doing no small part to the scholarships I received from our local business owners. I very much feel as though I was raised by this community. After spending the better part of a decade living in a variety of places across the country, it came time to decide where I would raise my own family. And there truly was no other place I could think of. To me, this crisis is personal because I remember with fondness the place where I grew up and I so badly want the same for my children. With the ever-increasing cost of construction and the lack of affordable housing options available, it's now more critical than ever for our community to provide the support systems necessary to ensure those on the margins of homelessness will not slip through the cracks. While the past ten years has provided immense growth and change for central Oregon, with this growth has come a set of challenges I think we're all scrambling to address now. Mountain View believes that the homeless crisis will be solved like rungs on a ladder with every business and organization and individual giving their best to be part of the solution. We feel our, our V park concept is one rung that doesn't currently exist in our area. We see this master planned community as an opportunity, not only to provide a transitional step for those leaving short-term shelters, but also for the newly homeless, for the working poor and for those on a fixed income. We feel this is a place we can catch people early and help them get back on their feet before they descend into chronic homelessness. Commissioners, we are so grateful for your time and for the work you're doing to move our community forward. We too are committed to doing the good hard work of bringing our public and private sectors together so that we can move forward as one united body. I think um, Mayor Fitch as well as possibly Keith or Kat Zwicker may have some comments they want to add, so I want to make sure to save a little time for them, but we're happy to answer any questions you might have for us.
Great, thank you very much.
I will add a few quick comments and then I'll hand, hand it over to the mayor, Kat Zwicker, City Councilor of City Redmond. Um, thank you very much commissioners for your continued um, support and partnership with our east side campus and the current um, approved lease of what, two weeks ago for our, our twelve acres. And you'll be happy to know that the Oasis Village is on track and we should be expecting our first guest December of two thousand twenty-three and a little bit ahead of schedule, so I'm very happy about that. I do agree with Mountain View that this is an exceptional opportunity to take that tract of land and create not only a transitional space that as we develop it could be used for safe parking, but that rolls into affordable managed RV camping for people that just need a place to start their transition back into permanent housing. It's just an amazing rung on that ladder that they're talking about and I'll turn it over to Ed.
Thank you. Uh, again, thanks for all of your help over the past year in terms of getting Oasis up on, uh, and running. Uh, we're happy to have Mountain View with their presentation. It's going to be an excellent project. The initial request for one point five million will allow for some site preparation there so that we can actually allow some safe parking while the rest of the funds are being um, acquired to complete the project. So it'll be put to immediate use. Uh, this isn't just going to be sitting in a bank. Uh, but this is important because not only the city, but also the county has an obligation to provide spaces for homeless so to ensure that number one, we comply with the law. Number two, that we find a safe place for these people to be. And number three, that we ensure the livability of our communities. Uh, we're well on track on that with the east side campus. The city's making a substantial investment in it as well. We've dedicated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the construction of Twenty First Street to provide safe access. Not only to Oasis and the RV facility, but also the forty-five acres. Uh, we're also working with ODOT and uh, our neighbors uh, to get the dedicated right away and investment into the path. Safe passage from this east side campus into town, so they're not walking on the highway. So I think together we can make this a reality. Um, we are going to recommend with the county to have an advisory board to coordinate all three of these. So they're all compatible, working together um, in harmony. Uh, but we are, are very optimistic about the future of that east side campus. And uh, we do hope that you'll be able to fund this, uh, because we, it's going to be a large stepping stone to making that whole east side campus a reality. Thank you. And again, Michelle and Rick are here as well for any questions you may have.
I have a question for county staff, uh, maybe particularly county legal, um. Which is so, um, uh, well, let me start by saying, um, I think that this is a very exciting project. I am really appreciative and supportive of all the work that Mountain View, uh, Community Development, the City of Redmond have done to uh, address our needs uh, for creating pathways out of homelessness for people, like meaningful pathways out of homelessness for people. Um, eh, as we've seen on this, in, in our staff memo, there is um, uh, 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 county admin leadership has recommended uh, allocation of two million dollars of, of these ARPA funds for um, supported managed outdoor shelter, um. That uh, essentially that the county can um, claim partnership in, or you know, and take some credit for. Um, as we are um, as we are looking at uh, uh, removing people from unauthorized locations. Um, so uh, we, we, um, we understand from all the debates about our, our camping code that, that we've adopted that uh, we need to pre- create, help create alternative places for people to go. Um, so we have this two million dollar, you know, item on this list and then we also have this request in front of us for Mountain, Mountain View, um, Community Development. And I'm wondering whether there is actually overlap, you know, whether the, the allocation of funds we make for one of these purposes could be considered an allocation for the other of these purposes as well.
Yeah, I, I think that there is, could be overlap. I think it's going to be dependent on how staff structures it and, and um, decides how to utilize each um, basically pot of funds and whether or not the managed camps is going to be for county managed camps, ones that were under control and ownership over, or if it's, they're going to obviously uh, utilize any of those funds for um, any type of service providers or privately run uh, projects. I don't know what uh, county staff is proposing at this time as far as the utilization of that two million dollar uh, project fund.
And you know, frankly, I don't picture the county owning and operating anything. I mean, I can, I could picture us contracting services, uh, but um, I, I guess, you know, for the purposes of, you know, of, of legal compliance with Boise versus Martin, I, I'm wondering whether uh, active partnership and investment in a project like this could um, you know, count uh, uh, that this facility on the ten, on the ten of the twelve acres as um, yeah, a county project uh, in the eyes of the court.
It could. It would depend more on whether or not there's any type of barriers to the project. That would be what you would look at as, if it's a low barrier shelter.
Okay. It is uh, to Mountain View Community Development, uh, is this currently um, envisioned as a low barrier shelter?
Yeah, Commissioner Chang, can I just, you can hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, this would not qualify as low barrier because this is a for rent model, right? So participants, uh, you know, like a second street shelter where you can come in or a winter shelter like we operate in our church gym, that's low barrier. This is really a rung up the ladder where we're beginning to work people back towards self-sufficiency. So the very fact that, that someone would be paying uh, rent would disqualify it from being low barrier. However, it opens up capacity for things like safe parking which are low barrier. So if you've got people kind of uh, coming in from winter shelter to safe parking or Oasis Village which are low barrier, and then you've got them moving up and out of that into something like a, a subsidized rent model like this, it opens up more capacity, more bed space at those uh, lower rung levels.
Yeah, so very valuable.
Some of my thoughts, uh, Deshute County proper, this goes right into the goal of doing a land swap for uh, the, the fairgrounds in the east side of Redmond and economic development over there. Uh, so I'm not landing on a decision here right now, uh, but I mean, that's the goal from my point of view as a Deshute County uh, representative wanting to do a land swap, which means deterministically getting a spot clear so we can do a land swap. So uh, everybody just needs to understand that, that'll be a priority because we're in the same situation at Juniper Ridge. We have a code enforcement case means it's pretty black and white. We have to proceed. So those are the two places that uh, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking I, we need to get some action done and that'll be part of the decision-making process for myself.
So, um, Michelle, can you clarify, you're talking about uh, sixty RVs? Will there, will be no small tiny homes or anything like that with your design at this point in time?
What we're looking at is kind of a phased approach. So this initial kind of phase one of the um, concept would be um, getting all of the infrastructure work done so that we have full utility hookups to um, each RV site. And then as we're kind of looking forward toward what is Mountain View's long-term goal um, or vision for the property, we like this RV park model because it allows us the opportunity to move into some more permanent structures um, down the road if, if that is um, what we feel is kind of the best, the best need for the community at the time. Um, so it, it leaves the door open for that possibility.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I could add to that, uh, once you get utilities stubbed into each RV site, it becomes very easy at that point to add a simple stick-built structure to that site at a minimal cost. Um, so the opportunity for, for eventual phasing is that the hard work has been done. Um, this is really a unique uh, opportunity. Also because it's so difficult to find large parcels of land inside the UGB. Uh, it really makes this property a very unique uh, property in Deshute County right now.
But though, there will be on the two acres, the Oasis Village that will be taking gases, uh, council, as Akur just said in December, how many um, small buildings will be there?
The uh, plan for Oasis Village is eventually to have initially fifteen by the end of the year, but uh, I think the plan is to have that grow over time uh, to possibly twenty-five or so. Maybe even thirty, but tho- that's a evolutionary process, but the initial plan is to have fifteen in place.
Okay, thanks.
I also, um, I have a financial overview handout that Michelle had sent to me this morning. So Michelle, I can hand these out. I don't know if you want to touch on that just at a very high level while I do that.
Yeah, what Laura is handing out was just um, some supplemental information so that if you wanted to kind of look at where our total project cost budget originated, um, you can kind of see some of the line items there. A little bit more detail if you have additional questions on that.
Thank you so much. That's the scope of the project at four million dollars, huh? Any other questions? So I'm just acknowledging time here. We're slipping way out a, a proposed uh, uh, schedule for today.
I'm fine.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, we'll do a quick overview on some of the remaining projects. I did just want to follow up to Commissioner Chang's uh, question regarding the uh, county's homeless reports, homeless uh, supported camps. Just so you know, part of that, while the details need to be worked out from my understanding is uh, the two million will cover costs through the eligible period, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six includes, uh, while this project's complimentary to the other, but it's not the same. The funds are directed, these, these funds are more directed to uh, clean water services, restroom facilities. So it's addressing the public safety, public health, public health issues as far as access to clean water and not uh, contaminating and also some sort of structure around uh, uh, that site. But that's to be determined as well. Although I do think uh, Christie may be in here if there's more questions or in the room, maybe. Uh, oh, yeah, oh, and Eric, Eric's here, if there are more questions specific to that project. Um, I don't believe there's anyone else in the room that had submitted a project, is that correct?
No, there's some people here.
Oh, is there someone from which organization?
Tumalo Water District, I know there is someone in the room. Mr. Dempsey's here, or he was here.
Robert, Robert Fish is here.
Robert is here.
Want to come up and say hi real quick? Here's your opportunity.
Yeah, if you'd like an opportunity to speak to your submission.
This is Tumalo wastewater system conversion seed funding is what it reads it.
Hello, are we on?
Yep.
Okay, um, my name's Robert Fish. I live in Tumalo, um, and I'm organizing continuing these uh, wastewater treatment system that was brought to light through a uh, a feasibility study that the county had, had done recently. Um, at this point, we're just in the, in this opening process of it all, just trying to get the um, things rolling to the point where we can see if it is even completely feasible with the number of uh, possible um, services that we have in the area and with the other restrictions and and uh, troubles that we have being down in Tumalo and then having to get the stuff someplace or take care of it ourselves down there. So we're looking for some seed money. I'm not sure exactly how much uh, we would need because I'm, I'm brand new at all this kind of stuff.
You're asking for seventy-five.
Somebody put in seventy-five.
Seventy-five, seventy.
Somebody recommended seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, so I'll just acknowledge, you know, this is a, a community conversation when Deshute County proper offers resources and this is the same as Terabon and, and it's the same thing in Lapine many years ago. Uh, it's still a community discussion and a community decision to form a sanitary district. So uh, just uh, you know, launching the analysis isn't uh, giving, giving authority to say it's here because that's a community discussion.
Absolutely, yes. We just need to be able to have some funds to talk with engineers, talk with legal, um, get the process moving in a direction, um, because I guess we'll have to pay for the, the election cost of it all too, once we get to that point. So getting the groundwork established. Um, I have a, what I call a steering committee put together. We've got six people other than myself that will be quasi um, board of directors. It's just more steering.
Committee at this time, yeah.
Yeah, a committee, just people that are, are interested in it also. So that way it doesn't sound like I'm making all the decisions, but we've got the community that's involved to direct it and make it do what the community wants.
Great, thank you. And I, I just want to express appreciation to Robert for really uh, stepping up and trying to take the bull by the horns after the feasibility, after the feasibility study that the county helped to support was completed. Um, and Um and uh everyone started looking at each other and saying, well, okay, now what do we do next? Um because and and uh you know, are the first thing we heard back from Chris Doherty was, I think that Leylaw Water District is going to take this on. Um you know, then then we I've heard, you know, I understand from 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 Robert, who's a board member of the Leylaw Water District, that that you know, he's he may be maybe the the most enthusiastic of the board members there um for this this cause. So it really will take a lot of uh uh community leadership and bringing people together to to move to take this uh potential project the next step. And you know, thank you for being at the center of that.
Well, thanks for helping out.
Good. Thank you so much for joining us.
Chair de bone commissioners to close out the presentation portion of this. I know we're running over. Uh Laura's gonna uh just provide an overview of the remaining projects who where there wasn't a speaker here today just to summarize uh and re-familiarize yourself and the public what those projects are for. So I'll turn that over to Laura to give a quick overview of the remaining projects on the community uh list, request list.
All right. So just as a reminder, you've uh received each of these proposals via email, but um these will just be high level summaries. So kind of in a similar lane, um the Terabon wastewater system is requesting additional funds of a hundred ninety thousand dollars. They originally were awarded three hundred thousand dollars for the design of sewer system and formation of their uh sanitary district in Terabon. Um this, these funds would support bringing that design to be considered trouble ready um and additional legal admin and community outreach items associated with the district and utility system formation. Um so the next one is from the Shield um for veterans counseling. This is also a request for additional funds. Um they were originally awarded twenty thousand dollars. They are now requesting twenty five thousand dollars uh which would provide two hundred and fifty hours of discounted specialized counseling for our local veterans. Um the next one is from Lapine Rural Fire Protection District uh requesting a hundred and twenty one thousand four hundred and seventy two dollars for um the placement of nineteen AED units in vehicles and public places in southern Deshute County um as well as outreach and training for those. Um and the last one um uh would be the Neighbor Impact Food Warehouse Expansion. Um they are requesting additional funds of one million dollars. Um their original award was two point four million. Um and this additional request is due to increased costs of construction um projects that we um know have been increasing recently. Um and then the last two that have been added um to your memo, we received within the last day. Um and so one of those is from Inspire Early Learning Centers. They're requesting twenty four thousand four hundred dollars. Um this would support staffing and also work toward opening thirty two additional new childcare slots for children under three. Um and then a new childcare center in Sisters um is requesting four hundred and twenty nine thousand six hundred and twenty one dollars to open that new center, which would include parking lot improvements, building um and building costs. And that rounds out all of our community requests.
Missioners, I know we've uh given you a lot of information today. Uh you've received again a lot of details in the past. So I do want to uh open the opportunity up. If you would like to take time to think about these projects, we can come back to you at a later date if you'd like to make funding decisions at that time. Otherwise, we are also open and welcome to having that discussion now and Laura has a spreadsheet if you would like to uh continue the conversation today.
It's been real valuable kind of diving into each one of these. Uh yeah, what's the will of the board for taking it to the next step? Any thoughts?
Well, I think there's some that I would say, oh, sure, we could do that right now, but I really, it's such a big pi- package. And then you've got to prioritize what is it on the backside that we're going to actually be able to fund? So I don't know. It's, do we have time next Wednesday? I mean, actually to do more of an analysis now that we've got, we've heard from everyone? Or is that day really busy and we should um you know, uh you know, select the ones that we know we want to do today?
And I could see just, you know, pulling up the spreadsheet at my desk and playing around with the numbers and see how it works for me. So I kind of see myself coming back.
I know I can see. It's just there's a lot, so much information.
Commissioner Dare, it does look like the board would have time next week if that was the will of the board.
I, okay, I think that probably would be appropriate.
I'd also put out the the uh the possibility of just coming back this afternoon. I mean, we have um we are way off schedule at this point. Um the, you know, the way we've allocated time in in the agenda development. Um uh th- this is clearly an item that's going to take a substantial amount of time. But um you know, I would be willing to come back after lunch and and uh dig into into this. That would give people some time to look at, look at spreadsheets, but also allow us to to act in a time, time responsive manner uh on these things. I'd also like to say that um I I think we should make a, you know, do a formal declaration that ARPA proposal acceptance period is over. Um that we have closed, we we will not accept any more proposals. I uh you know, I I the the most recent one that came in, which is a a really good project. Um I you know, came in in response to some discussions that I was having with people in Sisters about childcare last. Well, I was just, we were talking about other things, but childcare came up. And then I I explained to people uh the ARPA allocations we had made to childcare. And you know, also said that one had come back and you know, come back to us. And people said, well, if you know, are those funds available for other childcare projects? And I said, well, um it you know, to me, there's 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 already plenty of proposals in the in the pipeline. I don't think we can accept other, you know, I like, I'm not excited about accepting other ones, but we have not closed. We have not formally closed um proposal acceptance. Uh so I just gave them enough information that they could, they could uh make a submission. And you know, we we got one in the afternoon yesterday before our deliberations today. So I I I really think we need to uh acknowledge that we are um oversubscribed in terms of, in terms of the funds we have available and and shut down acceptance of ARPA proposals um formally.
Well, I support coming to that conclusion, so that'd be part of this. Uh are you available for reconvening this afternoon?
I have, I have a safety meeting for COAC.
At what time?
At two thirty. So I mean, I don't know when we're gonna, we're we still have a ways to go with our meeting.
COAC to drive to Redmond?
No, I I'm not exactly sure where I'm sure I'm supposed to be, but it's at two thirty.
Uh well, so maybe reconvene at one thirty and just take it a little farther, see if we can get landed. It may be valuable. I mean, because we'll be running.
There there are a lot of entities. It would be great to give some certainty about whether they're getting funding or not.
I'll go from one thirty to two o'clock, see if we can get it done.
Think we can get something done then? Yes.
Or two fifteen if it's online for you too or something.
Right.
Okay, yeah, so let's do that. I mean, there's no harm in deliberating and talking, see what how far we'll take it. So we will reconvene on this matter at one thirty this afternoon.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Working through our agenda, item number thirteen deliberations, a request to vacate a portion of the Shible Road. So uh there's Cody. Thank you very much for joining us uh remotely. Uh we had a good hearing on this matter this last week and brought it to this week. Uh thank you very much for providing all the written testimony. I was able to review the package. And uh we shall make a decision is what uh what was pointed out to us. So this is uh obviously uh um you know, some history here, the neighbors, relationships uh uh and access to this uh specific parcel. So any other thoughts to get started or deliberations? This is us just diving right in.
Right.
Well, Cody, any other new information? Anything we should know?
Uh yeah, uh real quick for the record, board, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deshute County Road Department. Uh no, board, I I I don't have any additional information to add. Uh obviously, I gave my presentation uh uh at last week's uh during the last week's hearing when the uh hearing was closed. Um so the the matter is before you now.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Any other?
Can I ask any? I can ask one question then.
It's kind of on the record.
Okay, all right. Well, I I've got it all here. So I'm fine.
Maybe we do want to leave?
Well, I I guess I would, I I'd like to um to reemphasize something that I said uh during the the hearing, which is that I think that there are a whole lot of very important but very i- individual interests at stake here. Um when, if we're being asked in part to determine what the public interest is, um I I don't, I really see good ways of determining what is in the public interest in this case because we have um a set of, a set of landowners, some who support the proposal, some who oppose the proposal. Yeah, each for, you know, uh again, uh reasons that are very important to them on an individual basis. I um and and you know, basically, we we get, we're in a posit, we're, I believe, I feel like we're, we've been placed in a position where we have to pick a winner and a loser. Um and there's a lot of legitimate concerns and interests all around on this issue and and claims. I mean, there's, and there was a, you know, a a a huge amount of history that was given. Um a lot of he said, she said about about h- how we arrived at this moment, um which I'm not really in a, in a position to um, you know, like I, we're not in a position to verify um many of the, many of the claims that were made by um both the the supporters and the opponents. Um I I would, you know, I would like to ask county legal whether there is actually a way for us um rather than, rather than to pick, uh you know, a winner and a loser or for this to be winner take all, uh essentially whether there are ways that we could um structure a decision that that is um yeah, you know, but ba- basically kind of give something to um more than one of the parties in the, in this, in this issue. Um um you know, the kind of, the kind of solution that might come out of a mediated, uh you know, a mediate, a a mediation if we were allowed to direct the the parties to go to mediation. Um or whether it's basically just we we get to decide whether to approve or or deny this.
I I mean, I think it's whether or not you want to approve or deny the vacation. The nature of the the proceedings as outlined in the ORS is it contemplates the fact that clearly you don't have agreement with, between the parties. That's why we're here. And um if we had a hundred percent agreement, clearly there would be no need for a hearing pursuant to the ORS. So I think that you are obligated to make that determination on whether or not to approve.
Uh well, so putting direction to this, uh I will support the, you know, road department's direction um in vacating this uh right away in the public interest. So I'm just letting you know, that's where I came down. I was reading this yesterday and uh I could have gone either way. There's obviously, there's a lot of history here. But uh the thing that really comes to mind is uh uh you know, the history of that meandering uh right away. Who, as I said, I don't have that, all that history. There's probably, it's interesting. Uh but you know, just the logic in me supports having uh you know, possible future access, which could be negotiated from the property owners or the access uh from old bedroom mid highway. So just letting you know, that's, that's where I come down on this.
I know the fact that Tax Lot nineteen uh nineteen oh one did sign the vaca- um the vacation order um seems to um, you know, it seemed to be impactful to them and they did sign the order. So that that does make my decision. Um I, yeah, it is definitely, you know, there's two sides to the story. And um I'm, you know, I'm really sorry that mediation isn't, we have to make a decision. So I would have to go with the um road department's assessment also.
So there's a, yeah, quorum of word on that matter. Uh we can make a motion and vote or you know, however, want to proceed.
So do I need to make that then?
Yeah, anything else?
I, I, yeah, okay. Yeah, go ahead and do that.
Okay, so is there?
Just supporting the vacation.
Okay, I uh would, I would make the motion for the board to uh support the vacation of a portion of Si- uh Shible Road.
Then second it if you don't. I'll second it. So this been seconded, moved and seconded. As I say, I I know this, this is, this is neighbors, it's close to heart for both parties. I, you know, we we are in that spot. Uh and then we did, you know, thanks for Cody and and legal for pointing out that we shall decide. So that was just such an interesting topic here today. So uh the motion's been made. Any other discussion? Seeing on Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang? Yes, and chair votes, yes. So there go, a decision's been made by the board of commissioners on this matter, application for vacating a portion of Shible Road.
Thank you, board. Just real quick, uh just for the uh uh to kind of outline the remainder of the process. Uh road department will be uh working with the gates on securing the right of way dedication for that north alignment of Shible Road. That was part of our recommendation to the board for uh uh a condition of approval here. Um and once we have that, we will present that to you along with a vacation order uh for your approval.
Great, okay. So vacation order approval will be coming.
All right, thank you.
Have a great day. Thank you, parties. Uh at this time, item number fourteen, this is deliberations of hearings officer decision on initiation of uh use involving marijuana production facility. Welcome back, Rick. Oh, it's in the large format in our, in our packet. I think, yeah, we got it. No, we got it. It's, yeah. We still had to print it twice. We're getting there, though.
But the really important thing is when I was reading it at home.
Yeah.
I could read it.
It's, good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, Avery Johnson, Assistant Planner with Community Development. Uh as you are aware, we recently conducted a hearing on the initiation of use hearings officer decision. Uh at the conclusion of that hearing, the commissioners asked that we schedule deliberations. And in your packet is the deliberations matrix that outlines the primary, primary issue before the board today, uh which is whether or not the board should further define what holder of a land use approval means. The matrix includes the hearings officer findings on this issue, the applicant's perspective, and along with staff's recommendation. For the purpose of this singular issue areas, uh staff provides three options for the board's decision. So the first option is to affirm the hearings officer decision, making a finding that it is appropriate to consider those expenditures made prior to land use approval. Option number two is a modification of the hearings officer decision where the board finds that in this unique situation where the use is no longer allowed by the code, that it is appropriate to consider those expenditures made prior to land use approval. Uh the third option again is staff's recommendation, which we coordinated with legal counsel with, that the expenditures which should be considered are those that were made from the time the decision became final to the end of its duration of approval. And with that, staff is available for any questions.
Great. Any thoughts or questions?
No.
Kind of a, one, one decision. So this is a declaratory ruling that the applicant had put out. Hearings officer came up with this concept. Um and it's in front of us now. I I I got any answer. Anybody want to lead or? So I support modifying the hearings officer's decision in support of the application. Uh very much extenuating circumstances, knowing that this was a, an approval. Uh uh county opted out. It is a marijuana production facility. Uh and this is just a unique instance. Uh and in support of our declaratory rulings and hearings officer uh decisions for future cases, I do not support uh, you know, uh um. initiated use before a decision. So I mean, that's exactly the situation we're in here. And that's how the Community Development Department made sure to bring it to us.
I, I wish there was maybe not as part of this process, but more broadly, I wish there was a way for us to reemphasize to entities that they should not start their project until they get their land use approvals. This is a unique case. But, uh, again, you know, if we, if we were able to at least, you know, impose a, 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 a fine or a penalty of some kind, I think I, I, I would, you know, I would, I would support the, you know, support with modifications the hearings officer's decision, but I, you know, I, 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 I would like for there to be a better way for us to signal to, yeah, you know, everyone in Deshute County that they should not start their projects until they get their land use approvals.
So what does modifying the hearings officer decision, you know? It's.
So modifying it would be that it's just in essence that the board is finding that this unique present circumstance is the only reason why you guys are affirming this hearings officer decision. Rather than just the declaratory ruling in general.
Because another path would have been to reapply for a previous approval, which might have been a, kind of the same path as declaratory ruling. It's just since it was opted out, that option wasn't available.
Correct. Yeah. Since marijuana production is no longer available per our code, that's why this is a unique circumstance. And so that would in essence be the modification.
Because it's no longer, will this person, just by doing item number two, will they be able to go ahead then with their operation?
Correct, they will.
Do you have clarity? So, yeah, well, we went to a motion, I guess, make a motion. Sure. So, and we can basically use, use this as a, as the guide. In the mask, I can, can I use this as the sort of language for a, for a motion? So I, I move to modify the hearings officer decision. Finding that with this present circumstance, finding these present circumstances are unique because the proposed use marijuana production facility is no longer allowed use. Therefore, in this specific circumstance, considering expenditures made prior to the land use approval is appropriate. Yeah. So, okay, that's the motion.
You, you can second it.
Okay, I will second it. So then for discussion, as I say, the crux of this is it's not appropriate. So I, that's why, at the last moment, I was like, oops, well, you know, does that really say we wanted to? But I mean, you, it looks like we're going to have support for proceeding with an approval. And just, you know, not putting as a future reference point for a future hearings officer, the fact that those you know, initiated costs are part of the decision. But yeah, so.
Acceptable.
I mean, well, in this instance, I guess, yeah, just the qualifier, because that's the whole concept.
In this specific.
Okay. Yeah. And that was just discussion. So caller, any, any other discussion? Calling for the vote, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare? And Chair votes yes. So that'll get us to a decision on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, second reading of an ordinance county code relative to camping and other sleeping associated activity on public property.
Hi Commissioners, Dave Doyle, County Attorney.
One moment.
I didn't hear Commissioner James' vote.
No, it was no.
The answer is no. Please proceed.
Okay, Dave Doyle, County Council here. This is time set for the, if you're electing to proceed, this would be second reading by title only. And then separately, adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-three zero one three, which made revisions to the county's existing code section eleven point zero four. As we discussed briefly with the, the Chair in the agenda conference, you know, one thing we want to point out to the board and kind of stress again that for this code to work, we have to have some alternate shelter sites to direct people to. And I think in light of the, the populations we have on the DSL land, on the Juniper Ridge Dirt World property, and potentially if there's any extension for China Hat, the federal properties, the two and three acre parcels that have been addressed and spoken about of late probably aren't going to suffice for that. So if, if the board is, wants more time potentially to find larger sites that could work as alternate shelter locations, then you, you could refrain from the second reading at this point and assess, in essence, keep this in sort of a holding pattern. I will note, if you do second reading by title only today, the adoption would occur ninety days later. In that point in time, there'd be no action taken on that new provision of county code. However, there is a, a risk that if you do second reading with the adoption ninety days later, that if someone wanted to challenge the code on its face without it actually being applied, there could be potential legal challenges as soon as that. So it's a thought to keep in mind if you don't already have some sites identified where you were going to be able to direct people to in order to enforce this camping code. So little complex, a little bit of a twist, but I, again, I want to, you know, we stress from the beginning and can't stress it enough, we have to have some other locations for this to really work and, and we believe be consistent with the Martin versus Boise and the Johnson versus Grants Pass decisions of the Ninth Circuit. So if the board's comfortable that within ninety days, they're going to have some sites available where populations of that size, including the, the Dirt World, the DSL land area, and potentially even the, the China Hat area. If you think in that ninety days, we're going to be able to locate and, and get those sites up and prepared to take those populations, then then you might want to continue with second reading and move on if you're concerned that that might not occur, or if the direction of the CHRO or anyone else seems to be more scattered, smaller sites, then this, this might not be ready to proceed. So I just want you to be aware of that.
So that's, yeah, in light of.
The landscape seems to be changing quite a bit since we, since the sheriff was here a couple, two, three months ago, bringing this issue up. And so whether that affects whether you folks want to move forward at this point, or or put this on the shelf for a little while to see what, what develops in terms of alternate shelter locations. That's, that's your decision to make.
On the results of what the outreach to governor directly and the response was, you know, non-on-resourced land outside of a city. So I mean, one part's got more clear, but it sure stopped us from having action available too.
But I do have a letter from Counselor Anthony Brodmann, who I talked to on Saturday. And he really feels, to quote the letter, House Bill two thousand and six expanded the concept to include any public or private entity, not just churches, and adjusted the limits under which overnight vehicle camping could be allowed, but did not add a requirement that this overnight camping can occur only within the UGBs. Anyway, you know, I know you're on a different position than that, but.
I think everyone in the States on a different position.
I know, but it, you know, he's citing it and what we have to provide. So.
I know DLCD would not agree with, with, with his assessment of that. They've told us as much. I don't believe the governor agrees with that. Your county legal department doesn't believe that's the appropriate interpretation of that provision. If it was, we'd sure as heck tell you if, if, if we felt that that authorized the county to go ahead and develop a bunch of, of, of alternate sites out on a few lands, we'd, we'd be the first to tell you that.
Acres right now that they shouldn't be on too, that we haven't moved them off of. So, you know, there's, there's two sides to this story.
Sure, but there's, there's.
I just feel like the nine acres between two churches is, you know, a better site than where they are now, the fifty acres. We haven't moved them.
Any thoughts, Commissioner?
On that or on?
Well, yeah, we're here for a second reading as scheduled. And now the guidance is that, you know, we're still going down a path that's unclear. And this may not be in implementable, I guess, is, is the problem. Yeah.
I'm comfortable either way. We, if we move forward with this, it creates urgency for the county to get real serious and focused and, and make these alternative sites happen if, if we're anxious that we won't be able to make that, get that lined up in ninety days, then then we can wait.
We actually are supposed to hear back from the state today. They are doing an analysis of their property. So Matthew Garrett told me he would let me know today.
They're not going to find anything in bed.
Well, you never know. Maybe they'll find something in Lapine, right, Commissioner Devon? You just.
Then the question is, yeah, do we have support for a second reading? For this to shoots county code at this point in time with the new information and how the landscape is evolving? So if we do a second reading and then adoption, ninety days is the window for implement for when it's.
Yeah, ninety days out would be when you could first start to enforce it. And again, you wouldn't be compelled to enforce it, but you'd have the ability, starting the tail end of November, to enforce that. And again, that's assuming you have some place to direct people to. If you don't have that, then, then staff would certainly recommend you not take any actions towards enforcing it. The, the one caveat I do put in is if you do second reading and adoption today, adoption meaning down the road in ninety days, there's a risk, I think it's a limited risk, but there's a a risk that, that it could be challenged on its face at that point in time, even before the ninety days runs.
Well.
Now, I will point out that the Johnson case and the Martin case were not facial challenges to those actions. Those were as applied on the ground type challenges. So that's would lead us to believe if this was going to be challenged, that's the point in time when it would occur. But we'd be remiss if we didn't at least alert you to there is the possibility on a constitutional basis, someone could challenge it on the face.
I'll make the motion. Move second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one three, providing amendments to Deschutes County Code section eleven point zero four.
I would just clarify, I would do two separate motions if you're move for a second reading by title only, and then do a second one for adoption.
Okay. So I make the motion second reading by title only. Amending the code.
And it's been seconded?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing done, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes also. So there answers that question. We're proceeding today. So this is second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one three by title only and ordinance amending title eleven dot zero four, public use of the Deschutes, public use of the Deschutes County Code. So a motion for adoption and that'll be not by emergency, so it'll be ninety days from now.
I move adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing done, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay. Well, thank you for putting that package together. We've had quite a process to get to this point. And obviously, the, the, yeah, it's not done yet. Whatever it is, it's not done yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So as I say, item, uh, I guess try and make sure I mention it correctly. So the ARPA, ARPA Funding Update, item number twelve, will reconvene at one thirty today for funding decisions and discussion. Is there anything else we want to fit in before lunch? Whitney, you're doing a great job there today.
Check one thirty or twelve thirty?
One thirty was the idea, to have a full lunch and be able to do it. Yep.
That's great. No, I think just a few items to coordinate with the board on. Health Services does have some additional information. If the board were interested in hearing it related to a potential reduced amount for their requests and how that might align with what they're proposing. So if it's of interest to the board, we can have Health Services staff come back this afternoon. And if the board has the information you need, that's fine.
Yeah. So yeah, I, I would support of having here, as I say, it was just one of those things that could be a variable. That's all I was proposing.
Right. And then I'm listening. You'd like to keep executives scheduled after.
Uh, well. So is your meeting online or?
It's soon, but I have to get upstairs and turn on my.
Okay.
Yes, I have to be there.
Whether the executive session now or?
Yeah, well, let's do that now. So then we're a little bit more.
Okay, I'm going to the restroom.
Yeah, let's take a little break. We'll have executive session, then take lunch. So executive session will be one nine two six six zero two D labor in a few moments. Okay, microphones are on. We're back to sheet county Board of Commissioners meeting. This is August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. We're discussing our item number twelve. ARPA updates and funding considerations extended agenda item. Great. Thank you, Chair Devon. Commissioners, thank you for bringing us back to have this conversation and work through some of these projects that are on the list that you have before you. I do want to highlight before we start, there are a couple of different ways you can go about this. One of the options is if you have your attachment in front of you, the top table that has ARPA, available ARPA funds, you will notice that there's a general ARPA funds available of two point nine million. Those are funds that aren't, weren't previously dedicated to allocated to a contingency account. You will notice there is a contingency public health response and the balance in that is six twenty-four, three ninety-five and contingency health unintended consequences, six fifty-one, three eighty-one, and then childcare workforce contingency of nine oh six. So the board previously directed that, that we set aside an allocation for that contingency. So one option is to continue to spend funds within those contingency categories. And then we'd have to know when you approve projects, where's the contingency coming from? And is it still fitting within those categories? It's option one. Another option is you can release the contingency into the general pot, general ARPA available, and then you could decide of the five point one million dollars, it can go to any category as well. So that's one decision point. I think it may help or hinder, you know, your process, but that could be a, it may help guide the conversation if you know if it's part of a general pot or if you're sticking within categories. And as we work through these items again, I do recommend if you could start with the current obligations. One is the boards, the board is already committed to those projects. We just need the funding allocated for that based on previous board decisions. And then we can work through the rest. Laura does have a spreadsheet here and as decisions are made, we can plunk in the numbers, update the numbers for more technical term. And, and then we can, you know, change the allocations as we go. If you do decide to fund the current obligations, again, you know, not presupposing an outcome, but if you do, those can even be done in a lump sum. And then, you know, then we can move on to the other ones that might make it easy as well. So just some thoughts as far as process that may help you as well. So looking at the top section, ARPA funds available, the childcare workforce development contingency is a good reminder that that was the contingency basically for the ask of neighbor impacts efforts. So that kind of helps and guide that as a decision upfront.
And are you able to read this spreadsheet on the screen in front of you?
Uh, yeah, generally, yep. I mean, I can, it's pretty small, but I've got a copy. Exactly.
We're good.
So that was just a opening kind of comment. And then, you know, the public health and health unintended consequences are in those same, you know, categories of contingency. You know, you, Robert, you were saying, you know, maybe do something active up there. I, I, I think we're at a point where we can just kind of leave them there. I think we're at a point where we can just kind of leave them there. Uh, I don't know that we need to change around the spreadsheet, I guess, is, you know, structure of the spreadsheet is is kind of the concept. If we would say, let's not call this contingency anymore. Let's all just put it in a big pool, but I don't mind just leaving that top section the way it is. This is a starting point.
I I mean, I uh, I maybe Robert was was offering that um, one of the ways we could dive into this would be through the contingencies kind of uh, you know, say we have this childcare contingency. What do we want to do within that contingency and and kind of break it down, you know, work at it from categories of available funds. Um, but I I that'll certainly be in the back of my head as we go through each of these requests anyway. So I'm 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 open to working at it, whoever people want to work at.
Well, and then uh, as I say, going back to that one again, so childcare workforce development contingency, if we allocate some amount less than that, do we think of it, do we hold it into that contingency? After we're done today or just not refer to it as a future contingency into that category? So we'll get there, we'll, you know, when we're done.
I know you're trying to simplify this, but yeah, just leaving it as five point one, five nine. I think it's fine. And um, you know, I think then we need to um, you suggested the current obligations, the one point six million. So, yeah, I think that's what we should um, approach first.
So getting to that section of current obligations, are there any uh, like uh, accepting the package or uh, changes proposed? Uh, I would possibly float that uh, the first two items could be discussed a little bit here. So Veterans Village Operations, uh, it's nice to have American Rescue Plan dollars out to the twenty twenty-six timeframe. Uh, but I'm just thinking that's another place where we could you know, reduce those dollars in support of something else. So uh, knowing that we're gonna, we have made a commitment and we are gonna pay for those. I remember when we made that commitment, it just kind of felt like that was gonna be a hundred thousand dollars a year out of our general fund for a period of time. So I'm just kind of calibrating where I was thinking that money was gonna come from originally. I will just remind the board too on those top items. Uh, we did not include any of these expenses in the long-term forecast for the general fund. So anything that's not funded through the ARPA dollars will be added to that next long-term forecast that we get, which I think we've talked about the long-term forecast as well.
Right, or we could, we could, we could work at that, you know, for example, if we're talking about Veterans Village operations. Um, we could, we could say we're going to fund uh, Veterans Village Operations, which is a a ten-year commitment from us. We, we're gonna fund that for the next two years out of ARPA and then we'll look at other things. We wouldn't have to make any adjustments right away, but.
Yeah, actually, I should have clarified. After twenty twenty-six, we do have that hundred thousand dollars in the long-term forecast for the out years, but not for the years during the ARPA eligible period.
Got it. Okay.
And these are all gonna be balances here. I mean, that's the discussion. So uh, and then Veterans Village expansion, you know, that's a request for those cottages. Uh, um, you know, as I say, my vision was always that that would be uh, you know, fifteen units or so. Now they want to expand and there seems to be support for that. Uh, but then once again, now we're we're pulling it right out. And as I say, I go back to I guess, uh, you know, so the big driver for me today is the fact that this Neighbor Impact Food Warehouse Expansion Request for a million dollars is critical, uh, just communicating with Scott Cooper and Neighbor Impact, critical for getting that over the uh, finish line. So that's a million dollar request. And then one point five million from Mountain View Community Development is a big number, you know, and everything kind of revolves around those two big numbers, I guess, is where I'm, what I'm thinking.
Well, the thing about Scott Cooper, it's, we already gave two point four million to that project. And how did it get so um, over budget? I mean, you know, we have people that in um, you know, Sun River that know they have to, they have to watch every dime and you know, coming up with another million for that, I think is incredibly significant. So um, and the Veterans Village, those cabins will be done by November. And I know that um, JW has said they want the actual uh, social center to be expanded upon before they bring in where they actually start utilizing those seven cabins. But what's more important than um, doing something really positive for our veterans program? The fact that they probably had about fifteen people now move on to permanent housing, I think that's really outstanding. They're they're doing an amazing job and I'm gonna go to their meeting tomorrow morning. And here about.
They're all good causes, so.
Right, well, we'd already, um, yeah, we'd already said we would do that. We already voted on it. Maybe you didn't vote for it, but I think the three hundred thousand is incredibly critical. And we, it's a program that works. It actually works. We know that people are moving on to permanent housing. They're getting great support services. It's um, you know, it's something to be really proud of in Deshute County.
So is that the first number to plug in then, three hundred thousand?
I I don't think anyone's arguing about taking money away from uh, our our commitments, the the commitments that we've made to Veterans Village. I think we're at, we're asking, you know, one of the things that's being asked here is whether we want to pay for all of that out of ARPA or whether we want to look at.
No, I think, yeah, that that number is sure, the four hundred and fifty thousand, you know, we could do only, let's say, two hundred thousand there. And then, no, we have to fund it when those years come up.
I will say on that one, um, it is, I believe that um, it was allocated uh, last fiscal year or the year before. So it is a little bit of a back. Um, it would be backdated payments as well. So that's why it's at four hundred fifty.
Oh, that's why it's at four fifty.
Probably bring us to current.
What would bring us current?
If you did, if you allocated two hundred thousand.
Okay. I'm okay with that, because I know we have things on the back page that we're gonna want to do something for.
What about you?
Yeah, two hundred, two fifty. That 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 would be reasonable uh, from my perspective.
So yeah, two fifty is the number I was thinking and and it's more information, knowing that we're going backwards on that before we go forwards. Uh, but I support that also, just knowing that there's, these are those variables that are gonna be kind of slicing.
So we're gonna do two fifty and we're gonna save at least four hundred thousand for something else.
Two hundred thousand.
Do you want two fifty, two hundred? Which one?
Two fifty.
Right, okay, two fifty.
So then Veteran Village expands to three hundred thousand. Is there support for taking?
That that's urgent near term. Uh, you know, when, when we, when uh, when the the folks from Veterans Village were here or upstairs talking with us, I didn't want to commit to three hundred thousand, but um, we we, you know, some, we did make that commit, that uh, commit to that amount. So I don't, I don't see how else we pay for that if it has to happen this year than out of these ARPA funds, so.
Okay, current obligations is is what we're talking about. So, okay, three hundred thousand.
And Hayden Holmes has already stepped up. So isn't that incredible? The first year, I thought we would start that program in twenty twenty, in three months. And we didn't. It took a whole nether year. But this time, the fact that they're gonna do those seven cabins out fast, I think is really commendable and I am so appreciative.
So then five hundred thousand wastewater treatment plant, Terabon Wastewater. So support for that, the way it's written out?
And the other half is gonna come from Pilt then?
That's where we're planning on uh, those funds coming from at this point.
Do we? Do we have a sense yet of whether we are going to actually receive that bonus Pilt money? That uh, that Chris, Chris kind of, well, worked us through the mechanics of.
Uh, we did actually receive Pilt money uh, this year in our, in our funds, haven't twenty-five, uh, fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, but we didn't receive the extra amount. So we we are anticipating that extra amount, because they won't deduct that other amount, if you remember that, kind of the graphic. So we should be receiving that. So we're still anticipating we will be receiving those funds.
When will we know?
I don't think it comes till later in the fiscal year. So it won't be until later. It won't be early in the, in this fiscal year at all. I think maybe, I can't remember, it may, we might have received the funds in May. It was later, if I remember correctly. Okay, so uh, yeah, five hundred for that though. It sounds like that's where we're at.
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure, yep. And then uh, Coordinated Houseless Response Office, this is kind of that same variable we started with, as in, this is our future obligation. So it was what, first three years were were funded by the million dollars, or first two years?
It was first two, but I think the funding's actually gonna last a bit longer, isn't it? What is our about, I, we're, we're like at eight hundred thousand or something now, I think of remaining funds?
Yeah, that was a number mentioned. So then, is this a partnership with other jurisdictions also?
Or is this, is this the county alone?
Thanks, Eric.
Like what, what you're seeing there is just a projected county contribution, but it's yet to be determined.
Yeah, okay. Well, I support keeping that there. I mean, that's the path we're on at this point in time and hopefully we'll get that all dialed in.
Yes.
I mean, we will get that all dialed.
We will get it all dialed in.
Okay.
Okay, so that gets us the first one. We trimmed a little.
Now we're at fourteen, four twenty-five, right? Yes.
See.
Okay.
Well. So you'll see that those are coming out of that general ARPA balance up at the very top, um, that first bucket of money. Um, but then it's also pulling out of that total remaining balance right here that, so we have a remaining total of three million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-two.
Well, that's very handy.
Ooh, fancy. And just confirming, yes, the amount was eight hundred and fifteen thousand uh, for uh, remaining in the coordinated houselessness funds.
Okay, so the next section.
Uh, so.
If it, if it really is, if there is that much, I mean, can we can we pare this down a little? Could we uh, you know, so, because we're I I don't know if there's a timeframe that that eight hundred fifteen thousand needs to be expended within, but we're only talking about uh, making ARPA allocations for the Coordinated Homeless Response Office through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So I mean, if if on the front end, there's, you know, there's gonna be funds to carry the Coordinated Homeless Response Office longer than the initial two years, then at least within this timeframe before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, we don't have to put three hundred seventy-five thousand in here. Is that? Am I? Am I off base there?
I don't think we do. Just depends.
No, I don't, I don't think you're off base at all. Yeah, the the money from the the million dollars from the state, um, I mean, the commitment is just a five, is to keep the o- office operating for five years.
So could we, could we, could we safely shave off like a hundred thousand of this, of three hundred seventy-five thousand or?
I would think so.
The, the uh, as then is on the note there, I mean, Eric can decide, but it, we estimated it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, per one in, per year. So that's where the three seventy-five, it's one and a half years. So if you want to do it in a full year increment, that would be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But it can be any.
Your increment is like one twenty-five, take, shave one twenty-five off of here, give ourselves uh, a pullback a half a year of funding.
So two fif- you're saying then two fifty?
Put the number two fifty in there.
So go with two fifty, is that, I mean.
That makes perfect sense, because we're, we're.
Do you think we, we, is that comfortable? Like, is it, you know, can we, do we feel like we're covering our commitments?
All about the general fund in the future.
Yeah, I don't, I'd have to kind of run a projection.
But do you have the access to the funds we have right now? Isn't it like eight hundred thousand? Isn't that what the number?
Robert just said eight seventeen, yeah.
Eight seventeen.
Burn rate is, you know, a hundred, you know, it's not even two hundred fifty thousand a year.
Now, now those, uh, there have not been any program expenses incurred recently. So that's why the, also the number's high. So if you start in increasing the amount of program expenses, then that would drop sooner, even though, or fill a position, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, the de- determination will be when, when it moves to COIC and what their staffing model looks like, that will largely impact the, the cost of the program.
But there wasn't anything in the actual legislation that said we had to spend all that money in the first two years. So that's, that's the really good news. So if we actually watch it really frugally and we're getting more state funding, you know, I I think really going down to two fifty makes sense.
I would hope that if if there's actual programmatic things that we want to do, we will also be looking at additional, you know, finding additional funds from additional places to actually do that. Do the, you know, to actually implement the plan. Um, but.
And this is just one more example where the uh, county has committed to this. The question here is, will it be ARPA funds or will it be general funds? Um, unless there's some other funding source from the state that comes along. But so this is really about allocating ARPA funds towards us.
I guess, but I'm, what I'm trying to get at is if there's still eight hundred fifteen thousand available right now, then maybe we don't need to put ARPA funds or general funds for some period of time. Because we're still covered by the eight hundred fifteen that's, that's in the bank. And um, yeah, so I, I, I would be comfortable proposing that we, we go to two, a, a commitment of two, two fifty um, for this timeframe um, prior to uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, that's the number that's in there.
Okay.
Excellent.
So new ARP considerations. Couple of these are kind of look, looking out for Deshute County proper here for the services we're providing. So basically, we could spend the rest of the dollars right here and be done, huh?
Yes, we could.
The last thing on this list, the, the reimbursement of ARPA eligible costs, I think uh, Robert was explaining how we could defer that decision till the end of December twenty twenty, or till December twenty twenty-four. Um, basically to see if there's any ARPA dollars still on the table uh, that were returned to for us from other projects, things like that before, you know, before we put it into ARPA eligible expenditures that we've already made. Um, so I, I would, I would suggest that we, we follow that advice and and postpone that action, that one million dollar action until a later date.
So there's nothing in that category right now. We'll, we'll finalize it as we get up and down this. Uh, what about homeless camps? So this is, this is the same discussion we just had, you know, putting in this uh, camping ordinance, uh, talking to the governor, not having a place, not seeing a lot of land available in the city of Bend.
So what right now have we allocated for the code enforcement cleanup? Is that like two hundred thousand? Um, and how long with the contracts that we've signed, um, is that projected to cover that location? For sanitary facilities, toilet and washing, trash disposal and security, I believe we're doing that too, aren't we not?
Yes, we're also doing security. I thought it was two fifty.
Is it two fifty?
Yeah. And I don't, I don't know. I mean, we're just getting the.
How long is it, is that two fifty for? Will it cover? Is it for five months, six months?
I don't know.
Christie's in the back of the room. Do you know Christie?
So we entered into, um, we're entering in or entered into contracts for porta potties, hand washing stations, potable water, security and then bio solutions for the environmental remediation. So the lion's share of that amount would likely go to bio solution. So however long it's gonna take to clean it up. But as far as the services that we're providing, um, those are roughly twenty-five thousand dollar contracts for potable water, et cetera. So when those dollar amounts were, are out, we'll have to come back and have that discussion. Are we gonna go out and do uh, informal requests for quotes again to get new contracts? So those were just limited contracts, just to get us started.
Like limited for like a month or something or?
A few months.
A few, like three?
Lot, roughly.
Okay.
And again, bio solutions is gonna be the most expensive part of that whole process for the remediation, the cleanup.
Okay. So you're saying for trash and everything, it's twenty-five thousand? Or is each one twenty-five thousand?
Um, potable water, we did a contract for twenty-five, um, portable, portable toilets and hand washing stations is twenty-five, it's one contract, and then security's twenty-five. So potable water and water will last longer. Um, yeah, excuse me, potable water and um, the contract for uh, toilets and hand washing stations, those contracts will last. toilets and hand washing stations, those contracts will last longer than like the security one would for sure, just because of the the costs associated.
What about, okay, what about just regular trash? Because we have the, we have this bio cleanup, but what about just regular trash? What what do they usually charge?
Regular trash?
Yeah, like let's say we have a dumpster there and we have to dump it out every, every week or something.
Yeah, so that's part of the bio solutions contract.
Right.
They're managing the dumpster. So I don't know exact cost and what it is, probably around five hundred bucks to to dump a thirty yard or something like that. But that's that's folded in with the bio solutions contract. They're managing that part of it for us.
Yeah, I was just trying to think, okay, so if we get a real managed camp with security, what kind of projection and you're saying like two million is what we should allocate, but I'm just trying to break it down. So I extrapolate.
Yeah, the the two million was just a placeholder. I've started to look at how much managed camps cost. There's one in Plaster County that has fifty tents. And they signed a, Plaster County signed a contract with a nonprofit for a six-month contract with a nonprofit for a million dollars. And one of the biggest costs of managed or supported camps is security. So if you look at if you look at having twenty-four seven security, that's eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty hours per year. If you multiply that by an hourly cost of sixty dollars an hour, that's over half a million dollars. So that's one of the biggest costs would be security and twenty-four seven security, just based on the number of hours that that's required. There's also a managed camp in the city of Los Angeles. They have seventy tents and it's a two million dollar contract for a year. I wasn't able to determine if that's includes one-time costs in terms of setup of the camp or if that's just operating. So those are just just some starting points.
I just met a security person Saturday and he may, they may have, his firm may have the contract for this. I don't know.
For the Juniper Ridge?
Yeah.
It's a compass?
Yes, that's who I met. Diego. So, okay.
So in this section, homeless camp, supported and managed, uh, two million dollar starting point. Is that the amount or could there might be there be less? And yeah. Eric just gave us some good numbers, six months and a year at a time is a million bucks.
Yeah.
I mean, the other.
That isn't even a support camp. That's something we're doing to to bring a site into. You know, hopefully into code compliance so that, you know, to mitigate the code complaint from surrounding property owners. That's that's not. You know, some of those costs would be similar to what what would be involved in in actually operating or supporting a managed camp, but it's it's we're not providing any onsite management essentially. At North Juniper Ridge, that would be something that's very different between what we're doing there and an outdoor shelter of some kind.
So do we leave two million dollars there?
I think we should right now.
So as well.
There you go. Okay. Be with a bunch of zeros, please.
And that brings us to the, I will use up all of the remaining general ARPA balance. So that would mean we would need to pull. You can do the math here, a certain amount out of one of the contingencies, if you want to stick with that two million dollars. This is where it gets a little bit messy.
Well, then the next two items are contingency items, so. We can consider those before we need to think about.
Sure.
Pulling money from any of those contingency.
Just for reference, the amount that would need to be pulled is three hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-four. But we can move down to the next item if if you'd like.
To get to the two million, we would.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Three hundred and what?
Uh, three twenty-four.
Three twenty-two.
Three twenty-two, five ninety-four.
And we do have health services in the room, if you'd like to ask questions about the next couple items on the list.
Did did you see that Janice had kind of some additional thoughts on? On the health services? I I thought Robert said that.
Yes, health services is here and they they do have some thoughts.
And additional.
Yeah.
Beyond the presentation this morning.
Please come join us.
We hear those?
We were just waiting for a party invitation.
There you go, the invitation.
Received. Uh, no commissioners, thank you. We heard your request to think about other alternatives for amounts and we had put together a couple of ideas and I'm going to let Cheryl talk through the details because I always get in trouble if I try to interpret her data for her.
Well, so I mean, just to make sure we're at, so we're talking, let's talk about those, you know, those two next items. We think of these as contingencies for under public health response and health unintended consequences. And these are two requests. So, you know, this will be the discussion, trying to get both of those in line here.
Yeah, and I I mean, in terms of prioritizing, I spoke with Holly and I spoke with my public health colleagues and Holly is comfortable letting go of the request for the stabilization amounts in lieu of requests that keep staff current staff doing good work employed. So I think if we had to reduce the amount, that's one decision we would make fairly readily, even though it's not ideal. It doesn't mean that anybody is looking less permanent employment and we're not losing capacity. So that's just one piece of information. So we're really talking about the public health emergency preparedness, response capacity ask specifically.
Yeah, and I think in classic health services fashion, we work within the constraints that we have. So we've developed a couple reduced cost scenarios. So it I think, I'm not sure what comes first. It's a little bit of chicken in the egg, but we have thought about what that looks like, those thresholds. The the minimum is four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six sixty-seven, so four hundred and ninety thousand to seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, more than that. So those, that's the range of potential options we've come up with. To meet the most pressing needs.
Uh, so for those two line items, is is that broken out at all? So the public health crisis, client support and then public health response and recovery. And I'm just trying to, looking at this spreadsheet. Are there numbers for each one of those line items or are you just kind of putting them both together at this point?
The crisis.
That's what we're trying to do is get through this spreadsheet. The whole thing, okay.
Hundred seventy-four is gone. So now you're talking four eighty-seven.
No.
Talking.
That was your minimum.
That's the minimum and that would end one current staff. So that is certainly not the ideal. So if if the full one point one million isn't a palatable amount at this point in time, our next option would be to reduce the timeframe for two of those positions. One of them we see as, I mean, they're all critical, but the most critical is that position that would actually be downgraded from a supervisor to a community health specialist three. And that position is the only position we have that actively works with a community-based organization. So really coordinating and those CBO efforts for emergency response and recovery. That we would ask to maintain through ARPA through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. That brings the total to seven hundred and thirty-three thousand.
And the management.
That one also would be reduced to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
So then, as I say, looking at the spreadsheet again, we're talking about the second line item, public health response and recovery at seven hundred something and nothing for the other line item. Because as I say, I'm just trying to keep my brain straight in this spreadsheet.
Yeah, and let me.
You just said four eighty-seven minimum. I wrote it down.
No, I mean.
So and then you give a range. So what what were you talking about when you said four eighty-seven?
So I'm going to talk about it in terms of actual people and services because I don't want to talk about it just as numbers.
But the payroll for the health department is almost fifty million dollars personnel. On the bottom line, fifty million, forty-nine, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars or something. So, you know, it's there's, there's a lot of people there in your financial statement. Because I just, I just looked at it.
Community with public health and we serve six thousand people a year with behavioral health. So we have a big staff. And we have a very large staff. This is a very particular team that does emergency response work. And I can talk about what each individual does if that helps you make a policy decision about the work that you want to see continue and the work that you maybe feel is less critical. I mean, it's, it is your call as policymakers, but I I don't know that I want to talk about just the numbers because it it doesn't, it's not how I think about the work. So if you want to know what the positions do, I can tell you what they do. And I think that might help you kind of get to the bottom line with us.
I'd like to.
If that's helpful.
I'd like to hear what the positions do.
Okay. So the, so Cheryl described one position that is a person who's currently in a supervisor role because the COVID emergency response team has shrunk. We do not need that person to be in a supervisory role. We do need them to continue to do work to get dollars and services into the community via CBOs when there's an emergency. So they've done things like stand-up vaccination clinics for Spanish-speaking people, for people in encampments for, they've helped coordinate with some of our long-term care providers with other teams. So they do a lot of that community based, that's just one example, but any emergency, they would be involved in the outreach, the wraparound services, working with community organizations. That's one. Second one is a management analyst who collects all of the data that goes into the public information that goes out in heat events, smoke events, fire events. Et cetera. So they're doing a great deal of sort of collecting data, collecting emergency management data, coordinating with that entity. Things that that together. The third position is Marissa. You're all familiar with her. She's done a lot of work on the COVID or the homeless encampment projects. She's working closely with Christie and and with me on the small group that's doing work to try to think through the cleanup efforts and what comes next. So Marissa's doing the coordination with the service provider community. Last piece of information. We would love to sustain all of those positions. We already have Marissa through the end of this fiscal year. I think Heather's preference, and she is on vacation and not able to speak to that, was to definitely keep the emergency preparedness broader capacity, which are the two position positions that I spoke about first and extend those as long as we can. So that's the service impact. That's what those people do. And Heather and Cheryl can sort of tell you how those numbers all play out with the actual dollar amounts for positions.
So Commissioner, there was going to be two, you're going to go to your meeting at two thirty? So I'm just worried we're going to.
That's when it is.
Yeah, okay. So we had a two thirty meeting there. So I think it's kind of, it's just, it is numbers today. I mean, great job explaining what's going on there, but you mentioned four hundred and something and seven hundred something. I think it's down to those two numbers. So I'm just thinking if we, is there any clarity on this at this time? And thank you very much for being flexible. As I say, I'm glad I said my piece this morning. I was like, oh, you know, it'd be nice if we could dial this in because there's a lot of other requests on the backside of this too.
Well, let me clarify, there is a third option that's right in the middle between those two. Like I said, that was the the range that we could foresee us to continue functioning, the the minimum, knowing that we're going to lose some capacity on that one. And the next one down from our ideal. Which gets us through to the next biennium. So the in-between one is six hundred and forty-seven thousand.
So that's your spreadsheet kind of with, yeah, the the services and the people and getting the numbers to that. And that's to the end of the biennium you're saying. So this, the one that was just started, basically. Six forty, I'm comfortable with that. Six forty-seven.
That 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 sounds good to me. I wish, I wish we could do more. I, it it's very difficult because you know. In in some ways, what we're talking about is is the continued ramp down from COVID. I mean, you know, we had a public health emergency. We built an incredible capacity to respond to that and we're struggling with this question of how much of that capacity do we maintain? For the next emergency, which we don't know what it's going to be and when it's coming exactly. That that six forty-seven kind of trying to maintain, you know, that full capacity, you know, the full capacity that we have for a a given period of time, eh? Um, I I that's what I would support.
But just to, just so you know what you're supporting, that particular option continues all three positions through December twenty twenty-five. That's what it does in effect. And part of the ask was that we make them regular positions and then we make decisions that we need to make when we head into fiscal year twenty-six about whether or not we can sustain those positions. And they're all three existing.
And maybe by, maybe by some point, or maybe before December twenty twenty-five, we'll have a sense of what the public health modernization.
We hope by June of of twenty-five, we know what the modernization dollars look like, if not sooner. Although often we're planning after the fact.
We usually find out, yeah.
We usually find out after we've submitted our budget to you.
Understood. So number proposed is six hundred and forty.
Six hundred and forty-seven.
Forty-seven, yeah. Go ahead and put that in and whichever line is the right one now. There we go. For those decisions thus far. So at the at the top of the screen again, we had the, thank you. We had the two contingencies for public health response and unintended consequences. If we back out the six forty-seven, it leaves six hundred and twenty-eight thousand. If we fund the shortage for the two million dollars of the three hundred and twenty-two, five ninety-four. If you want to release that contingency to the, to fund that two million and then have the remainder, it leaves, should leave you with three oh six, one eighty-two. Well, as I say, I mean, I I do see that this is the time to kind of channel the dollars and and not use the contingency to to guide those final commitments at this time.
Funky, but we will get there. Okay. It is. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Okay.
And what is the total add up so far? We're looking at those.
Yeah.
Top number, the top box is the resources and the other two is what we spent now, right?
And of the remaining funds, nine hundred, six thousand of that is what we had in the childcare workforce contingency.
Yes. So as I say, I mean, I guess that may be the guidance to to get to the new community requests for neighbor impact.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, I mean, obviously the other, pretty much everything else is starting to fall off.
Well, that's, I mean, the 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 nice thing is that uh, if we, if we grant that full amount, the full amount requested for the neighbor impact childcare workforce asks, it actually is is. Less than the, the full contingency amount that we had allocated, so that even would free up a little bit.
Yes.
Um, and I, you know, if we're. Rather than go through this, this, um. List of community requests in order, I, I, I think it would be. It might be good to, to grapple with that one first. I, I would support. I would support allocating that full six hundred and seventy-two thousand to. Um, these childcare workforce, uh, development efforts like, um. They are critically important, um, especially. In this environment where, uh, you know, essentially they, at the fundamental level, the. The, the math for childcare doesn't work out.
But were you looking, listening to the numbers? Because we had given them a million sixty thousand, and then we gave them two hundred and eighty-four thousand. That's a million three, um, and they said they had forty-three candidates. Well, that's, that's like thirty-one thousand a candidate. So why is it, I know, she said nine thousand, and I'm going like, I'm adding up all this, and I'm going, why is?
A lot more, they're doing a lot more than just doing that direct training to those forty-three. They're, they're, they're doing. Yeah, you know, they're, they're doing, you know, essentially business counseling and other things for, uh, leaders of childcare. Providing, uh, you know, this additional, um. Mental health support to people who are in childcare and to, you know, both directly to people who are, you know, childcare practitioners. And also supporting them in understanding what, uh, what all these kids are going through, who have been. You know, at home with their, with their parents and their siblings for, you know, a chunk of time during COVID. So there's. There are a lot of things that was, were being done, but in addition to the direct training of those forty-three.
Okay, well, I'd love to know if the forty-three are still doing the program. You know, what, what is the success rate? Okay, so the people that started out two years ago, are they still in the program? Or, you know, they decided that, no, this isn't really for me. I mean, you might, they might be doing all these other things, and I realize our kids need a lot of attention, but. It just seems like there's a lot of money being spent, and. I'm not sure if we need to do six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars worth for it on top of what we've already done.
Karen explained how the. You know, the, a number of the childcares where those trainees were, were placed to do their training. Were really eager to. Uh, were really eager to, you know, have even additional trainees come through. Um, so.
Well, I'm sure they are, because everyone is short, but, you know, I just, um, I just was wondering why it's a lot of money. I, you know. I would be happy to do five hundred thousand, but it just seems like we're just. It's a lot of money, and we do have some other requests in here that I feel like if we can come up with a few more dollars for them, it would be helpful.
So you'd support the program, paring it down a little?
Just a touch, yeah. I just feel like, you know, it's, they've had a lot of funding from us, and. Uh, honestly, I would have hoped that they would have had more than forty-three. Go through it.
Well, so you mentioned five hundred thousand.
Thousand, that's fine.
Yeah, so there you go.
Okay.
So just five zero zero zero, whatever, in one of those.
It's still half a million dollars. I mean, it's still a whole bunch of money.
The neighborhood pact childcare is two, but just put a half a million in one of those ones.
Okay.
Probably that one, yep. Could be spent as they.
Allocate.
Appropriate, yeah.
And as, and as. You know, while we're speaking about neighbor impact as, as. Uh, as important a project as the food warehouse is, I. I would agree with, uh, whichever, uh, my fellow commissioner said earlier. We have already allocated two point four million dollars to it, and it's really hard to. Yeah, to think on, think of adding to that.
I know, especially that amount, I just.
I'll, I will do whatever I can in my power to talk to other people about contributing to that project, but I, I, I feel like we. Um, we extended ourselves pretty far by putting two point four million dollars in on the front end and, and. I. There are just too many other needs.
Well, so there's, yeah, so put zero in there, there's two commissioners saying that.
We're at, uh, seven hundred and twelve thousand, one eighty-two left.
Which is what's in there already, but yeah, what is it?
Seven twelve, one eighty-two. Left to allocate. If you're using all the contingencies.
But that's okay, yeah, that's the total number now, just dialing down to zero, so.
And that's not putting anything for that million. I mean, we could always have things come back. Couldn't we? I mean, it is possible.
An important decision point for that again is that December thirty-first, twenty twenty, uh, four, we just want to make sure we have a project. Approved, because all funds have to be obligated by that point, so that way if there are returned funds or other uses, we can make sure we can use it for that.
Okay, so now.
Like I stick in there are two wastewater.
Yep, okay.
Let's.
Wastewater.
So let's do those two.
Both of them.
Yeah, the seventy-five and the one ninety.
Uh, you know, and, uh. A- after hearing the, the presentation on, on Terbon, you know, they're so close, and they just need help with this last step, but. I also. I, I wonder if they could do, if they could make it happen with a little less than one ninety. It's a significant amount of, of funding on top of. Everything we've already obligated from the very beginning of that project.
Fact that the project is even going to happen, I think is a miracle.
It is a miracle.
I'm comfortable doing one ninety.
Yeah, I just, that's just, that community, I, it's, it's good to help them.
Because it, yeah, that's, that's a go.
Right, we are so close.
Discuss, you know, Tomalo is still a lot more of a community conversation about even what's going to happen, but I do understand some of this can be used for. Uh, you know, possible design solutions, taking them and putting them on paper for the community to, to understand, too. Okay, so. We got two things.
Those two, with those two, where, where, what do we?
Now we're at, with those two, the one ninety and the seventy-five thousand added, so now you have four forty-seven, one eighty-two remaining.
Well, less than half a million dollars. Who could have thought?
Yeah, if we're, uh, you know, uh, looking at that, these two very recent childcare requests. Well, one thing I would say is I, I, I'm very concerned about. Um, granting requests for, um. Day-to-day staffing or, you know, paying your, your monthly lease on your, um, on your building, because. If we do that for one childcare, we should be ready to, um. You know, receive a mound of requests from every single other childcare that also has personnel costs and, and lease costs. Um, the.
Well, that, that's just paying up the rent. They consolidated their program and, you know, that's, you know, I guess they thought it was a good ask.
I mean, it's. I, I, I totally understand, you know, A, childcare is extremely important, B, it's a totally reasonable thing to want to. Um, seek support for or help for, but I, I. Just, um, as policy for us, I, I think if we, if we start paying someone's, one, someone's monthly rent or. Paying for their, you know, for them to retain their staff, then. Um, we open ourselves up to a whole bunch of other childcares, saying, we, why did you do that for them and not for us? And that's really, you know, that's a really problematic. It's a really problematic, uh. You know, uh, position to put ourselves in. I, the, the other piece, um, from April Farmer's request from, from, from Sisters. It's, it's more of a one-time ask for infrastructure to get a building to the point where it's usable as childcare. Um, I would. If we're going to entertain, uh, childcare requests, I lean much more towards that part. Of the, the request that, the, you know, one time, you know, this is, you know, transformational capital project that'll get us to. To expand a childcare rather than. Uh, the other part of the request, which was, you know, please pay for, or, you know, subsidize our staff for a certain period of time.
Just skipping to something, what about, um, the shield? What about just doing five thousand dollars? We ordered them twenty already, if we just added five, because they're asking for twenty-five here. Uh, um, what is it? That would be fifty hours of counseling?
Two hundred and fifty hours.
Well, no, if we just did five thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, yeah.
Yeah, just, you know, just to help that out, because I know we do have, um, a lot of veterans out there. How many of them are we losing on a daily basis? Uh, it's, it's, the number has gotten really up there.
It's getting down to the range where it's, uh, almost like a, a discretionary grant lottery dollar request, so.
I know, but we can't, we don't even really have five thousand now, because we did cut back, remember our grant funding on a quarterly basis, so. You know, if we just did five thousand there, at least that would help them out, they would. Have some more help.
Uh, I would support that, uh, it's a small amount that we can put in there. Um, so I'd, I'd go back to the food warehouse, uh, project. So how about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, some number? Uh, and the reason is, I mean, this is a project, there's been a lot of fundraising done already, we did put in a big amount. This is foundational for Central Oregon and all the nonprofits and food distribution and programs we have. Uh, bringing that to the, and for emergency support and management, too. Bringing that facility to the next level is kind of foundational for all of Central Oregon. It is, uh, uh, you know, out of Portland, that's the next big place for. Food warehouse. So I mean, if we're looking at, you know, these smaller amounts of money, I'd still go back to that. And, you know, balancing that with Mountain View Community Development. You know, that, that's a big, big, bold ask, and it kind of, it'd be great if we could get there, but it looks like we're just not going to be able to get there today. Uh, you know, I like the idea that we're putting that. Uh, money in for the homeless camp supported managed camps. So that's going to really help. Something, but not the big capacity for capital for.
But did you see what happened to our warehouse? It first was at sixty-two thousand, and then it was at fifteen, four thousand, and then it's like, you know, now it's like at fifty thousand. Because they were aware of the costs involved and. Because they knew we had our number, it was forty thousand, five hundred, you know, and that's what we were going to spend, and so they actually went from that point of view. So it's really unfortunate.
State gave us fifteen million. I mean, this is, this is inflation.
Well.
Cause it was a twenty-five million dollar project that's, you know, expanded to forty real fast.
Yes, it was tw- twenty-seven million, and then it went to forty, but, I mean, it got really big. And then when they started costing it, it, every time I'd look at it, it was smaller and smaller, because they knew what, they knew we had a budget, and it's just like.
Chilling out a fourth floor, too. I mean, the, you know, we dreamed bigger, and they came up with bigger numbers and. You know, we had to, we, we had to scale down. But I, I think that the food warehouse is a different kind of, is a different kind of animal in that, you know. They have been operating grossly under capacity, you know, in terms of space for, for years now. And the demand is just going to keep increasing as the population keeps increasing and as. And as there are many, many more people who are living on the margin and needing nutritional assistance in our community. Uh, you know, so I, I.
Two five zero.
I believe in it as a project. I, I just feel like we have put in so much DARPA funds already.
How about one five zero?
That's fine, as I say, I'm just proposing that something gets put there.
Okay.
Um, can we clarify? I've heard two fifty and one fifty, just wanted to know where the, or.
He's not supporting it, and she mentioned one five zero, so.
I said one fifty.
Looks like one five zero is the number.
I mean, to let him know that, yeah, it's a. Yeah, it's a, it's a project, but. Yes.
So that's a number.
So now you have two hundred and ninety-two thousand, one eighty-two.
Uh, as I say, if we're. I was gonna say, I mean, uh, you know, Mountain View Community Development asked for a big one, you know, one point five million. Uh, so I don't know if any funds are going to help that, or how much it really fits into the big picture of what we want to do, because then this, uh. You know, this could be that, instead of a contingency, it could be fitting into the. Deshute County reimbursable ARPA eligible costs and just sit there for the next, you know, year and a half possibly.
What about doing like two hundred thousand? Um, I think we really did support Redmond tremendously with the nine hundred thousand for the Bethlehem Inn. And the city didn't at that point in time, remember? They didn't, they were going to, they were going to be asked for four hundred and fifty thousand, and they didn't do it, and we did it. So if we at least give them something, um, I feel like that's.
Who's that? Mountain View?
Mountain View. I mean, I, I really appreciate their program, they're modeling after Austin, and I don't want to say no, but. At this moment in time, it doesn't really fit, and hopefully we can get some more funding from the state. But, um, you know, they're asking for a lot.
Support some kind of a seed funding.
Well, I said two hundred, so, okay, two fifty, does that work?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not one point five million, but it's, 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 it, it will help.
There's two hundred and ninety-two thousand, one eighty-two left.
I kind of like to leave a little bit there, just in case. Whatever, two hundred, two fifty, one of those. I mean.
Support two hundred thousand.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, so. So.
Amazing.
So, okay, it's. It's time for me to go upstairs.
Okay, so then, uh, do you support DARPA general balance, or just putting it in a reimbursable, our, our, our eligible cost category for the future?
Category for the future.
Okay, yeah, so then, then the number zero after today.
And then, uh, sorry, Commissioner Ernles, there too, can we just have a motion at the end of the spreadsheet? And we'll put the remainder ninety-two, one eighty-two in that, uh, placeholder.
Eligible reimbursement.
Eligible reimbursement for expenditure. And we just need a motion approving as a minute.
Go ahead and say so.
Don't move.
There you go. Any other discussion? Seeing on Commissioner Dare?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Chair votes, yes.
Thank you very much.
There we go. Great job.
Oh, our. And, and we'll close down, uh, the ARPA, uh, yeah, requests for more.
There's truly zero.
Allocated all of the dollars out.
And you never know, we may have more coming back.
Well. Hope not. All those great projects happen. Okay, well, thanks for being flexible, Commissioner. Uh, with that agenda item complete, do we want to do anything else today or any other items, or?
Really, at the discretion of the board, um, we did have executive sessions scheduled. Next week, if that works better.
Yeah, next week, just, it's a good discussion that we can do together.
Stephanie Robinson is going to come down to review the, um, county college presentation board, we can also push that to Monday. Um, if that works best to have a full board present, that review, that presentation hasn't changed a lot since, since it was provided to last year's class, so. Just say you're.
Kind of had the look and feel going too right now, huh?
So, um, so.
Yeah, uh, and has it been sent to all of us?
It did, and we can get our copies into your boxes before Monday, if that would be.
Yeah, that'll be helpful. Okay, so I'll be speaking at the Redmond Rotary tomorrow, using a pared-down county presentation, basically just two topics, kind of, and then questions. Uh, solidway siding, uh, landfill siding, and, uh, east side of Redmond, kind of the big picture. And it's good, you know, Oasis Village, uh, Mountain View, uh, and I'm going to mention the long-term visitor area, basically still trying to digest what. What that possibility might be, in coordination with city councilors, because two or three of them are going to be at the meeting. So as I say, I'm not gonna. I'm not demanding or overstepping per se, but I'm definitely dropping some ideas out there.
Want to propose, if you want to drop your, your ideas and present them as your ideas, that's.
Well, yeah, as I say, that's exactly what I'm doing. So, okay, and, and anything else? Yeah, meeting adjourned.